All right, if we could, please join me in salute to the flag if we can come to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands all right, thanks, everybody. And just for the record, I'll be going off of the last agenda that Cameron sent us. It opened up the web link. So that's the agenda on the portal. All right, Cam, can we have a sunshine announcement, please?
Certainly. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, April 26th in the year 2022. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting scheduled 5:30 PM start time. This planning board meeting is being held virtually as a video conference that is open to the public. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the city clerk on Friday, April 22nd in the year 2022. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials were made available to the board, were published, and made available to the public.
All right, thanks, Cam. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Okay, there we go. That's better. I changed it to gallery view. It's easier to take attendance. All right. Council President Waterman?
Here.
Commissioner Green?
Here.
Commissioner Horton?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Here.
Dr. Desai?
Yeah.
Commissioner Torres?
Yeah.
And Chairman Langston?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum.
All right, thanks, Cam. Could we swear in the staff, please?
I see Matt, Liz, France, Tim, Cameron, Tanya, and Lindsay and Mallory. Do you guys want any testimony you get tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mike. Do we have any correspondence, Cam?
Yes, we do. We have six items on tonight's agenda that have requested to carry to May 10th of this year. That's our next regularly scheduled meeting. Okay, so the following items. Starting with item 15 on the agenda, it's case number P21-158. This is a minor subdivision with C variances. Address is 297 to 301 First Street. That has requested to carry to May 10th, the next scheduled meeting. Again, that's item 15. Item 16, case number P22-031, preliminary and final major site plan amendment. Address is 286 and 296 Cole Street. That is item 16, requesting to carry to May 10th. Item 19, case number P21-060, minor site plan with C variances. Address is 26 Prime, requesting to carry to May 10th. Item 22, case number P22-002, address 246 Clinton Avenue. Minor site plan amendment, requesting to carry to May 10th. Item number 26, case number P21-146, minor site plan. Address is 335 Palisade Avenue. Again, requesting to carry with preservation notice to May 10th. And lastly, item 27 on the agenda, case number P21-162. Minor site plan. Address is 25 Columbus Drive, requesting to carry to May 10th. So again, those are six items on the agenda. And that would be items 15, 16, 19, 22, 26, and 27.
Okay, thanks, Cam. If we could, let's post that in the chat for everybody. So if you're here from the public and you're here to hear, you're here to hear. You got notice on any of those applications. This is your notice that they'll be carried to May 10th. You will not get another notice. So we are notifying you right now. All right, so let's get right into old business. Item A on the agenda is case P22-018. They one-year extension for 242 Hudson Street and 32nd Street.
All right, promoting Chuck Harrington.
Evening.
Evening, Council.
Hey, for the record, Charles Harrington of Conne Foley, on behalf of the applicant. I did provide notice for this extension. Not sure if that was required, but we did regardless.
Evening, Council. I am in receipt of your affidavit of publication proof of mailing. All appears to be in order. We mark it as a one.
Thank you. So yeah, this, the extension before you is for the extension of the site plan approval. That was approved by this board on March 10th, 2020. So that has recently expired. We are seeking a one-year extension of that. The reason being, along with the obvious COVID issues, is that there are a lot of issues related to this project. You know, and figuring out utilities and easements, and we've been working on that. And the client is hoping to break ground, you know, within the next six months to a year. So that we're just seeking this additional time to complete that process. And then in connection with this, if the board probably recalls the beer garden that has been approved for interim uses over the last three-plus years. That approval is due to expire June 9th of 2022, so it's coming up soon. Initially, my client wasn't going to seek that extension because that beer garden will be built out as a full-time use and the structures as part of the, what's called the Plaza Eight project. But because of the delays in the construction, my client is seeking to extend that so that during the 2022 spring and summer that they can activate that if they choose to in the meantime.
Okay, thanks, Council. Anybody, any questions? All right, thank you, everybody. Is there anybody here from public that wants to comment on this application? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in and you want to comment on this application, please press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody from public?
Mr. Chair, seeing no public, I move to close the public.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Matt, do you have anything you want to add? Any problems?
No comments. The resolutions that are referenced in the description were distributed on the data portal. Stat Franklin's approval.
Okay, thank you. And just for record, we do have Commissioner Lipsky here. He was not present for road call, or I'm sorry, roll call, but he is on now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve case P22-018 as presented to the board.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval. Okay, Commissioner Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Chairman, just one question. I don't know if the, there's 10 commissioners. So my is an alternate privilege to vote?
I think we have nine, is that right? But yeah, that's probably still the case.
We, no, I think, I think Commissioner Lipsky makes 10.
Oh, does it?
Councilwoman, Commissioner Green, Gangadin, that's three, Dr. Desai is four, Gonzalez, Langston, five and six. Allen, Horton, Torres, and then Lipsky will be 10.
Sorry for the confusion, so. I'm not needed. I can, a bunch of things in the community I can go do. If you need me, I'll stay.
We always love to have you. I hate to have you sit here if you can't vote.
That's the thing. I mean, I've watched the video for 141. I'm ready to go, but it looks like we got a full crew on board, so. Now, if you need me, I'll keep my phone. There's an iftar I want to go to, and then there's a village meeting I want to go to, so.
All right.
Call me and I'll get on.
All right, thank you. We appreciate you.
See, I appreciate you all. Bye.
Okay, nine members. We took the last vote with Commissioner Allen, Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Council President Waterman?
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor. Okay, thank you, Mr. Harrington. We also have you for another extension. Do you want to present that while we have you up?
Sure.
So let's call item D is case P22-047 is a two-year extension for 975 Garfield Ave.
Hey, Charles, for the record, Charles Harrington of Conne Foley, on behalf of the applicant. So this also is a request for an extension. In this instance, we're asking for two years because of the, the approval, the two-year approval period expired on September 24th, 2021. So we're asking for two additional years from that date because September 24th is around the corner. I can note that, again, this, this project, my client has been designated as the redeveloper by the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency. We have been working on a redevelopment agreement. We just finalized that within the last month. There also are some utility issues that we're working out with the Jersey City Engineering Department and the MUA. So that's, you know, partly the reason for the delay, along with the usual, you know, COVID issues.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Anybody, any questions on a two-year extension?
No.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Is anybody here from the public that wants to comment? If you'd like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand on this application. Anybody from public?
Mr. Chair, I see no public. I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, I didn't even see who's this is.
No real connoisseur of motion, or Steph Richmond's boom.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P22-047 as presented to the board tonight.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded for approval. Commissioner Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
You're muted.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Horton?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Council President Waterman?
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor. All right, thank you, Mr. Harrington. That's the last extension, I think, right?
That's my last extension, yes. Thank you.
Excellent, thanks. All right, let's move on to item B on the agenda is case P21-116 is a one-year extension for 55 Washburn Street.
Promoted per. Okay, so they said that they declined to be promoted.
Who is that, Cam? That's the applicant?
Yeah, per, per and per son. Um, promote them again.
All right, why don't we promote then case P22-033? And if this applicant decides to accept it, we can deal with them so as to not slow down the momentum.
Yeah, Tim, maybe. Tim, is it possible for you to reach out?
I only have an email. Is it possible, since it's a pro, say I can speak on their behalf? I'm aware of the.
I will.
Extension being required.
I'll refer to Santo on that one.
Chairman, we're gonna need to hear from the applicant.
Okay. All right, so let's move on to item C. But we'll come back to B is case P22-033 is a one-year extension for 830 to 832 Pavonia Ave.
Okay, I'm looking for Rosemary. I don't see Rosemary.
If the attorney for the applicant can raise their hand, we'll promote you. If not, we'll have to move on.
Rosemary Stone Doherty.
I don't even see her on the attendees, Cam.
No, I don't either. Rosemary Stone Dante.
Perhaps we can move on, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Tim, maybe.
I'll send some emails.
While you're writing those emails, let's. All right, so we already covered D. Let's move on to item E is case P22-044 is a one-year extension for 17th, I'm sorry, 147 Academy Street.
Promoting Martin Flagler.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening, Council. Floor is yours, Council.
Thank you, Martin Flagler, Harder Flagler, on behalf of the applicant, Lexi Ma Academy, URE LLC, asking for a third one-year extension. Applicant is, that has four projects actually going. One's completed recently. One's substantial completion is already done. And this one and the next one on your agenda, he's just in pre-construction phase and getting ready to get going. Obviously, with the COVID and the supply chain issues, we've been delayed like a lot of most other people. But it's our plan to get these going within the next year, both this one and the next one.
Okay, um, let's handle this one and then we'll move on to the next one after I call it. Okay, anybody from the board, any questions?
Excellent.
Okay, seeing no questions, I'll open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application for 147 Academy Street, a one-year extension, please raise your hand. If you're calling in and you want to comment on this application, please press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody from public?
Chair, seeing no public, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Cam, I'm sorry, Tim, this one's yours.
Yeah, planning approves of the extension.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P22-044 as presented to the board tonight.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Commissioner Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Horton?
Aye.
Council President Waterman?
Aye.
And Commissioner Gangadin?
Aye.
Commissioner Langston, Chairman Langston?
Aye.
All in favor, motion passes.
Okay, thanks. All right, let's call item F is case P22-043 is a one-year extension for 232 to 238 SIP Avenue.
I'm going to the board again, Martin Flagler, Harder Flagler for the applicant, Doug Mama SIP LLC. As with the previous one, same reasons, this is our second one-year extension. Again, we plan on moving forward with this and the Academy Street one in the coming year. But with all the other issues going on, obviously, we've been delayed. I mean, I forgot to mention on the last one, and this one, obviously, we've submitted notices to, to the respective planner.
All right, Santo, do you have notice?
The delay is me searching for.
Internet's slower up there in the country.
I'm at 5G speed over here.
No, I read.
Can't believe everything you read, Chairman. Only what you hear.
Jersey City has one of the best internet speeds in the country, I heard.
Sam, I'll save, I'll save you the trouble. I just looked through my email. I did not include this in your package of notices because it did not have to notice. In fact, actually, I didn't, I didn't get an email. I only got an email with notices for 147 Academy, actually, Mr. Flagler. I'm sure you sent them, but I do not have them.
Yeah.
Chairman, I would concur that notice isn't required, so.
Yeah, we did assign a button as a caution, but we can, if you need them, Cameron, we can get them to you, but.
Okay, yeah, it's all right.
Okay, but Chairman, the record will reflect that the applicant represents they've noticed. It is the board's position, notice is not required, and Mr. Flagler can put it in just so that we have a complete record in the event, same as necessary.
Okay, thank you. With that, are there any questions from the board? All right, thank you, everybody. Anybody from public, if you'd like to comment on this application, a one-year extension for 232 to 238 SIP Ave. Please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise that hand. Anybody from public?
Chair, I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Cam, this is yours. Any questions, problems, comments?
Thanks, that recommends continue approval.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P22-043 as presented to the board tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Thank you, members.
Okay, Council President Waterman?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Commissioner Horton?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
All right, thank you. Tim, any luck reaching out?
Yeah, um, I think he, or at least Rosemary has her hand raised now.
I see Rosemary.
Yeah, if we could promote her, and we'll call that case. That's item C on the agenda is case P22-033. Is a one-year extension for 830 to 832 Pavonia Ave.
Good evening, everyone. I'm trying to figure out why the camera is not starting.
Okay.
There it goes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Apologies for my lateness, running back from the hospital this evening. Thank you so much. We're here tonight asking for an extension on the approvals for Pavonia Avenue. I sent a written request in to the board explaining the delays my client has just had as a result of, probably this board's dealt with it numerous times now with delays as a result of COVID and other matters, and is now prepared to get busy on getting that project fully effectuated and hopefully developed within the next 12 to 18 months. So we're asking for our first extension.
Okay, thank you, Council. Anybody, any questions on a one-year extension?
Nope.
Okay, seeing none, I'll move on. Is there anybody here from the public that wants to comment on a one-year extension for 830 to 832 Pavonia Ave? Anybody from public, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand.
Chair, seeing no. Move to close the public portion?
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Tim, do you have anything you want to add?
Planning approves of the extension.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P22-033 as presented to the board here tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Commissioner Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres? Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Horton?
Aye.
Council President Waterman?
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
All in favor, motion passes.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Tim, any luck on the other one?
Yeah, I got, he responded to me. He says. He, he needs to. He needs to raise his hand. He's on the meeting.
Oh, I went to promote Purah Prasad and they accepted.
Okay. All right, so, Tim, are we calling that application? Is everything okay? Okay, so let's go back to item B is case P21-116 is a one-year extension for 55 Washburn Street.
And Mr. Prasad, if you're there, you can unmute and turn your video on, and I'll swear you in, okay?
Thank you.
Great, I can see you, I can hear you, and I'll swear you in. You swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Puran Prasad, P-U-R-A-N, last name, P-E-R-S-A-U, Deans and David.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Prasad, good evening. So you're asking for a one-year extension for 55 Washburn Street? I don't want to put words in your mouth. I'm assuming it's from COVID. That seems to be the case all over the place.
I would really. Can I speak?
Sure, go ahead, sir.
I would really appreciate, since I lost almost six months, if you can give me a two-year, but I'll try my best to get things rolling because by the time I get the paperwork from you, it's gonna be in the seven months. The remaining five months wouldn't be enough to renegotiate a builder, get a loan, get a permit, this thing take time.
Sure.
So I don't know.
Tim, can we change it to two years?
I, he's on, this would be his third, third extension, one-year extension. He is allowed to extend that due to the COVID Permit Extension Act. But I'm not sure exactly how long that will be, since it was the second extension, I think that was in the COVID period. So I believe, I mean, I, I spoke with Tanya about this. I did not have an issue with the year extension. But Santo, I mean, if you, if it can go further than that. I don't believe that we can give a two-year extension. That being the case, it has to be one year, and it has to be retroactive to the date when it expires, so. You may have to apply for another extension, sir.
I, I don't want to come back and bother you guys, but the five months seem not enough. It might barely be possible, but then.
But I don't have the power to give you more. So if he, if he were to come back after this one-year extension is up, retroactive, which would be approximately November, then he could come back and request, under the COVID Permit Extension Act, an additional extension. Yeah, I've read, I've read it in detail the last couple of days, so.
The problem is, without a valid site plan, everything else fall apart. I can't apply. I can't apply for the permit, the loan, or a builder. I have to get a builder first with an approved site plan, take that to the bank. And then the permit. Permit alone takes like, like two months, I think. I went through that process already and everything collapsed because the site plan expired.
Yeah. No, I, I understand, sir, but I don't think legally we can change it to a two-year extension at this point. Santo, am I correct in that?
You are correct. The best that we can do, Chairman, is we can write that it's extended in accordance with the law. Uh, but I believe that means it expires in September. It's a one-year extension.
Yeah.
Based on what you're telling us, sir, that it expired in September.
Yes, the same thing happened here. When I applied, it expired and everything collapsed, so with the timeframe, it might happen again. I only have five months. I couldn't apply before, prior to this because I don't have a, a valid site plan. Because since, since October I applied, and because of the COVID, you guys have the same problem.
Yeah.
This is six months.
Legally, we can't grant that two-year extension. We can only grant you a one-year extension tonight.
So you can't give a one-year beginning like today?
Well, we can give the one year, but the problem is, if you're going to redo the site plan, you're going to have to come back if there are variances.
No, no, not, nothing is wrong with the plan. We'll, we'll go as.
Then, then you would, then you would, then you would have this extension, and then when this extension is up, you'd come back for an additional extension under the, the COVID protect, uh, the COVID Permit Extension Act.
Can you give me something writing that I can do that? So they would see that.
Sir, that's what we're gonna give you, but for, for the record, Chairman, this application was originally approved in twenty seventeen.
Sure, understood.
Yeah, the, the first two years, I, I misunderstood what the architect told me. He said it took three years to expire. And this is my first time. I'm not selling this property. It's my pension, my retirement property. And, um, that's how the, the first two, three years passed. Then the COVID hit. And I, and you guys renewed it twice during the COVID period.
Understood.
That's why it took so long.
Yeah, the, the best we can do for you tonight, uh, would be a one-year extension.
So it would expire in six months?
Yeah, it's, unfortunately, it's backdated to when your, uh, your application expired, your site plan expired last.
So you guys guarantee if I can't pull it through within the remaining six months, you guys gonna remove once more?
I could never guarantee that. I, I would strongly suggest that it's, it's on my eight and a half years here. I don't believe we've ever turned down an extension for anybody. These are certainly, um, sensitive times, but, you know, certainly I can't guarantee anything.
Right.
If, you know, I, I can talk to Tim, um, you can put that record in, in writing to the bank, but that's, that's the best we can do. I could never guarantee an approval.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, anybody from the board, any questions? Anybody else?
No, I, I just want to get clarity, so we can give him the extension. It's over in September, correct?
Yes.
November, okay, but based on what Tim's saying, he may have the right to come back under the COVID Act to get an additional extension, correct? Okay, as I say, I just want it clear, maybe he got, all right.
So would that be in writing with the extension under the COVID Act? So at least the bank or, or the building department, 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 they can maybe override?
Waiting on that. I might be able to put that into the resolution.
Right.
Inside the language of the, uh, extension act.
Perfect, yeah, that works.
All right, it appears that it is November when the extension would, would run through.
Right.
The last resolution is a December resolution.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you, everybody. Uh, if anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. If you're calling in and you'd like to comment, please press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody from public?
Sure, I see no public. I move to close.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Uh, Tim, obviously, we have your recommendation already.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we'd like to make an emotion to approve case P two-one dash one-one-six as presented to the board tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Commissioner Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres. Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Hi.
Commissioner Green.
Hi.
Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Horton.
Hi.
Council President Waterman.
Hi.
Commissioner Gangaden.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Hi, good luck, Mr. Prasad.
All in favor, motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night. Uh, let's call item G on the agenda is case P two-two dash zero four-nine. It's a conditional use, uh, for one forty-one Newark Avenue. This was carried from, uh, our March twenty-eighth meeting with testimony taken. Uh, Cam, can we go down the list of commissioners that were at that meeting that heard the, uh, testimony? Or Matt, either one, Matt, this is your application.
Um, actually, I apologize. I don't know if I have that, um, list in front of me right now. Uh, I think that we were still waiting on the transcript and asked any commissioners that were not present to watch the recording.
Uh, I could tell you. Chairman, you were here. Vidya was here. Council President was here. Jeffrey, Eddie, Peter.
Okay, so we have a quorum. Okay, um, so anybody else, uh, have you had a chance to watch the video?
Mr. Chair, I did.
Okay, so we have Dr. Gonzalez on board. Um, Mike, you read that off too quick. I didn't, I didn't get it.
All right, so it's you.
Vidya, Jeopardy.
Vidya, Jeffrey, Council President Waterman.
Joyce.
Eddie. And Peter.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what is this, um, address again?
Uh, one forty-one Newark Avenue. Uh, Cam had sent a video out.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, Commissioner Green is on board. And Dr. Desai, how about you? Did you have a chance to watch that video?
No.
Okay. All right, so you wouldn't be allowed to vote on this application tonight? Okay, I think that's everybody, right?
Chairman, do you want me to see if I can get Commissioner Listy there?
Um, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, we have seven.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
We have a quorum.
We have eight. Orlando. Okay. All right, Council, are you, uh, on board here? Do we have you?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's Frank Vitolo. I'm with Sales Commiss and Gross on behalf of applicant Oceanfront Holdings LLC.
Sure.
Apo- apologies, I was slated to do the first hearing in this matter, but it fell on spring break. So I was in Disney World, whereupon, in exchange for all my money, Mickey gave me COVID. So then I was down for another week after that, so it's been a couple of weeks. I use the word vacation very loosely when I, when I talk about that.
I'm glad to see you're doing well.
I'm still here.
Just, uh, for the record, uh, Commissioner Gonzalez, Vice Chair Gonzalez, are you still on?
I'm here.
Okay, and you're gonna abstain on this, or you're gonna recuse?
I will be abstaining.
Okay, so you'd be able to hear the application and comment?
That's correct.
Okay, gotcha. All right, I apologize, Council. Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we're back here for a second hearing on Oceanfront's application for conditional use approval to operate a retail cannabis dispensary on the ground floor at one forty-one Newark Avenue. Uh, as you may recall, from the first night, this application is limited to approval for a class-five retail cannabis location. Uh, we are on a parallel track for approval of a medical cannibal cannabis license at the same property, but that ATC license and process is not before the board this evening. Uh, the plan is, once the medical business is up and running, we will seek approval from the state to extend the, exten- expand the license to include recreational adult-use cannabis. Um, there were a couple of questions raised during the first hearing, um, and we are going to address those this evening. Um, we, you will hear this evening, and you'll see her on, on the screen from Amanda Handy. She is one of the co-owners of Oceanfront, and she's going to talk about the company. And she's also gonna address, uh, a question that was raised about, uh, the community impact plan that was submitted in this matter. Um, there was also a question, uh, about, uh, there was a, a term used by one of our people uh, who said this was going to be a apprenticeship program. That, that is not at all what, uh, we're proposing. We are proposing an employee training program as part of our business. Uh, so Oceanfront intends to offer all employees a rigorous training program on how to market and sell adult-use cannabis. Oceanfront will provide this training free of charge to all new employees. And that will equip them both with the skills to not only serve Oceanfront and their customers, but also will prepare them to work in the field generally. In case, uh, they switch, uh, jobs, they'll have those skills from the training program.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, um, during the first hearing, there was also some questions about floor plan. We did submit um, architectural drawings, so before we call Ms. Handy, we would like to call Dennis Stefino, and he is the project architect. Okay, great. And, uh, Council, before we call up Mr. DeVino, uh, there was also one other, um, hiccup, uh, the council at the time referred to a letter of support from city council of Jersey City. Is that the case, or is that not the case?
Um, I do believe that, um, one of our witnesses, witnesses did reference letters of support from the, the city.
Okay, we had just never received any letters of support, and it was from city council?
Yeah, I believe those were in connection with the ATC license, so that's why, um, they were not submitted, because that's not before the board.
Okay, so there's no letter of, uh, support from city council on this?
And, and if I'm incorrect, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Handy can address that question, the co-owner.
Okay, great. All right, so let's, uh, swear in Mr. DeVino, please.
Hey, Dennis, these sworn testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Dennis Michael DeVino, D E V I N O.
Thank you.
Mr. DeVino, good to see you. Uh, we've qualified you numerous times in the past. Your license is current tonight?
Yeah, yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified again.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Chairman, before we get to Mr. DeVino, um, I just checked my notes, and the letter that you were speaking about was a letter of support from the mayor's office, um, not from the council, and we did submit that letter.
Okay, I believe it was stated, um, I'd have to go back to the record that it was from city council. Okay.
Here, you're correct.
You're correct. They just stated.
Okay, um, again, I'll, we'll try to clear this up with, with the co-owner, but thank you. Uh, Mr. DeVino, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Okay.
You were sworn in, um, could you just, you, you've appeared before this board before, sir?
That's correct, yes.
And been qualified as an expert in architecture before?
Yes, I have.
Mr. Chair, should, do I need to go through his qualifications, or?
No, we've, we've qualified Mr. DeVino already.
Oh, terrific, thank you. So, Mr. DeVino, you, did you prepare the plans for this project?
Yes, we did.
Okay, and I understand you were prepared to share a screen and describe the plans for the board?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, I want to thank the board again for hearing our application this evening. We are the architects, uh, for the project, and we also the architects actually of record of the, of the actual building itself. So we're very familiar with the building, um, so hopefully, uh, the presentation, uh, will cover, um, all of the concerns of the board. I'll share the screen now, hopefully. All right, we have that?
Yes, we got it.
Okay, great. So I think there were, there were a total of five, um, drawings that we submitted. Uh, the first four drawings are, uh, the architectural side. For the fifth drawing is, uh, our security plan that, uh, you'll hear testimony from a security expert. Um, first sheet is, uh, a, a normal, uh, cover sheet, where, where we cover the zoning uh, tabulation. This is, as indicated in staff comments, uh, a permitted conditional use. Um, it is, um, a retail, for all practical purposes, a retail establishment, uh, based on the, um, standards, the, the cannabis business standards, uh, the, uh, copy I have is dated March first, two thousand twenty-two. Again, as I identified in, uh, staff comments, we fall under, uh, eighty-four dash, uh, eighty-four dash forty-five permitted classes under a class-five use. Uh, the building is, uh, one of the, the buildings that, uh, fall in that, uh, pedestrian plaza, uh, in the Newark Avenue Downtown Redevelopment District. It is also one of the buildings that spans from Newark Avenue through on to, uh, Christopher Columbus Drive. Uh, the first drawing is, uh, essentially indicating, uh, that we, the two-hundred-foot radius, uh, the the colored plate all the way to the bottom left-hand quarter identifies a two-hundred-foot radius to the nearest school. That's the yellowish, uh, tone here. The next drawing identifies the location, which indicates that we are in fact in that neighborhood, that pedestrian plaza slash neighborhood, um, I'm sorry, the Newark Avenue Downtown Redevelopment. The next two photographs, the one to the left is the, uh, present, uh, current elevation of current photograph of one, one forty-one Newark, sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Mr. DeVino, you're providing some feedback, it sounds like, but Mr. DeVino, I think we went through this, and where the disconnect was, was there was no floor plan. We were just shown a vanilla box.
Okay, so we'll jump right over to the floor plan then. Um, the, um, first floor, uh, would the, the retail establishment is a combination of, um, both the first floor, a mezzanine level, and, and then the secured basement area. So the floor plan that we're gonna be showing under Z two is the first floor plan, which is the, the plan that's located in, uh, the center plate. Uh, this side of the drawing, this is the entrance from Newark. The opposite side here is the entrance from Columbus. Uh, the plan, of course, is to have the main entrance on Newark Avenue. It's about five hundred and eighty square feet of the point-of-sale area. This is the main location where.
Should we, you know, we cannot see Z two, if that's what you're.
Okay. How about now?
Just stop and start your share again.
Are you guys able to see it now?
Uh, we're still on Z one. We briefly had Z two.
There you go.
There it is.
All right, can you, all right, can we, can you see Z three as well, once I go down?
Yeah.
We can, yes.
All right, great, okay. So Z two is the, uh, drawing, uh, that shows the floor plans. Again, the center, um, plate is the first floor plan, the main entrance to the sales, retail sales area. Uh, I do want to, um, make mention that this is retail sales only, not a consumption lounge. Uh, it's, uh, so there will be no, um, odors, um, you know, that will, uh, go beyond the, um, you know, out that, for the, uh, area of sales, so it's not a, not a consumption lounge. This is strictly retail. Uh, the entrance, again, the main entrance is on one forty-one Newark. Uh, we have a, approximately a seven-foot, uh, wide, uh, foyer area that where individuals will be identified, they'll be carded, if you will, where before they're allowed to enter the sales area. The circulation of the sales area, as you can see, this section in the center is the point of sales, of the counter space. Uh, the circulation will happen directly through the main front entrance and then around, uh, the counter. The counters and then exit. Back out on to the foyer area through the second door. The space that you see here is strictly for display. The entrance, or should I say the exit on Columbus will be an emergency exit only, as we do need two means of ingress. There will be, the the entrance will also be used only for deliveries. We felt that when we've had this discussion with the client, that the more secured location for deliveries would be on Columbus. Since that vehicles are not permitted on the Newark street side. The basement, as you can see on this upper section, upper plan. The main secured section will be down the set of stairs that takes you to the basement level. Two secure doors on either side, a vault door that goes into the vault and preparation area. And then another storage section that is only for non cannabis material. Other products that they might sell will be stored in this area. To the left will be essentially an office, a second, a second restroom, IT rooms and break room. And the, the basement is secured. By a ten inch block, some concrete block wall that's here, which. Divides up the common space. Everything you see in these drawings that are. Pocheted gray is common area and everything you see in the light color color would be devoted to the retail space. The final drawing at the base essentially is showing that there is the mezzanine area that is above the retail space of. On the Columbus Street side, that area will also simply be used for a display of retail products, non cannabis products. So that's basically the plan is a. The basement is seventeen hundred and forty square feet, the first floor seventeen hundred and seventy-four square feet. And the mezzanine four hundred and eighty-five square feet. This drawing simply shows a blow up so the board can understand a little bit better. How that retail floor area will be, will circulate. The final architectural sheet. Is based mainly for signage location. You see these two drawings to the left are the exterior elevations. There are, those areas are blown up. This one is on Newark. We are proposing a ten square foot sign that is halo backlit block letters. The letters are proposed to be black with a light or white color behind them, but it is a backlit halo. Style sign. That's the same, same sign design will be on the Columbus Street side. We have another, we are permitted to have a blade sign on Columbus Street. So we are proposing a blade sign. Sets up about ten feet off the ground, off the the sidewalk right at this location. We are also proposing a small sign on the window that identifies that this is not the main entrance for sales. So it doesn't get confused that it's for delivery. The delivery only location and we direct individuals to the Newark Street side. The final item on the elevations, I'd like to point to the. Board is that we are proposing on the Newark Street side. Since this section here, it's a, it's a fifteen or fourteen or fifteen foot. Dimension from finished floor to underside of the second floor slam. It's, we will be dropping some sort of a ceiling in that space, in that retail space. So we are, will either be putting mechanical equipment up inside that ceiling space. Or we will have to block these windows off so you don't see the, the open space above the ceiling. So I just want to go on record to the board that these windows will either be blocked out. Blacked out or insulated panels or potentially a a louver panel for fresh air and. There'll be no exhaust coming through here, but there will be a requirement for for fresh air and makeup air to possibly come through. These panels. So that's all I really have for the structure. I do like to point out, the final plate is the security design, which will be. Presented by the security expert. I do want to just point out that as far as security goes. The building is a concrete building. It's, it's got twelve inches of concrete on the sidewalls. It's got a. Ten inch concrete floor on the first floor, second floor and third floor. So secure, security is, is almost bank security. I mean, it has. Reinforced concrete all around. So as far as the structure goes. It's very secure. It's also a fully sprinkled building and fully fire alarm building. So architecturally, I think we have a very secure location for this, for this use.
Thank you very much, Mr. DeVino. Mr. Chair, we don't have any other questions for Mr. DeVino, but of course, the welcome questions from. The commissioners and the public.
Sure, thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. DeVino. Actually, Matt, I do have a question for you. That doesn't trigger a deviation as far as losing some of that glass on the front of Newark Avenue, does it?
Not familiar of a glazing requirement in the street development plan.
Well, the, if I, if I may chime in. Commissioner, that glass would have to, I mean. If you look through those glass storefronts now and you look straight up, you you see mechanical equipment, you see PVC pipes. You see waterline, you see sprinkler lines. That, that glass would have to be, have to be altered in some way, shape or form. So you don't see what would be above the, above the ceiling anyway. So.
Understood. I just want to make sure it doesn't trigger a deviation that, you know. We're, we're granting something that we can't grant unless you technically ask for it, I guess. I don't know if that makes any sense.
Chairman last.
If they block that out in that section. Don't leave the opportunity that they could put moves. I don't think it would be. They were gonna put louvers, I think it should act to us. If they were gonna store louvers up to cover the glass. I understand your question, whether it's. It is to change that, but I'm not comfortable with them changing that to movers there. For fresh air or anything like that. It's not gonna be for consumption and if it's not gonna be for consumption, I don't think they need to have the louvers there. That was my take on that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we need to bring fresh air into the basement because the basement is going to be occupied. So where's really no other place to to get fresh air. So we, we, we can limit, minimize the the louver requirement, but we do need to bring fresh air.
I was misunderstood. I thought you said you were putting the louvers there just to cover the pipes.
Oh, no, no, it's, it's there. We won't put the louvers in unless we absolutely need them.
Oh, okay. That's, that's, I thought you were saying you were, you were either gonna pack up the glass. Or put louvers there so you can control the pipe and get fresh air.
No, no.
Okay. I'm not clear of which one you call.
It, well, we, we haven't designed mechanical systems yet, so we're not clear either, but we will minimize the louver. In that location, but we, we, we need to be prepared. And I wanted the board to be prepared that if we need to put, we need to get fresh air, we definitely need to get fresh air into the location. So. By code, so we just want to prepare the board that there may be some a louver component in that storefront.
Chairman, I just looked up the Newark Avenue Downtown redevelopment plan. Unlike some plans that require a certain percentage of glazing on a ground floor facade, this plan is not. It's simply a design requirement. To, for the primary facade to be upgraded and contain the ground floor retail with inviting design and maximum glazing. And that applies to rehab and new construction. So there's not a specific percentage requirement.
Okay, excellent. All right, anybody else? Any questions for Mr. DeVino? All right, thank you, Mr. DeVino. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have Tony Gallo here. He's the individual who prepared the security plan. I do intend to call him, Mr. Chairman, unless. You know, the board doesn't have any questions or does it, is it good enough to have this submitted? But I do have him here this evening.
Matt, are you satisfied with the security plan?
I, I think it's, it's good that it's submitted. I think that this. Element might be more in the wheelhouse of the cannabis control board. If, if you want to defer to them, Commissioner.
I, I agree. It's as long as, you know, it checks planning's boxes, I'm fine moving forward.
Okay, thank you very much. So if we can stop the screen share on this, I'd like to call the owner, one of the owners, Amanda Handy, please.
Good evening, commissioners.
Let me just swear you in, all right? Right hand.
Sure.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Amanda, A M A N D A, Handy, H A N D Y.
Thank you.
Ms. Handy, good evening. So you are one of the principals, one of the owners of the.
I am.
Okay.
And Ms. Handy, I understand you're here to testify about the Oceanfront business, your role in it. And the community impact plan you're proposing, is that right?
Right.
Go on, go on ahead then. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. I am Amanda Handy, co owner of Oceanfront Holdings. I want to start by thanking all of the commissioners for being here tonight and volunteering your time and efforts. We thank you for your service and patience in hearing these first applications regarding adult use. Rewatching the first hearing in our case, I realized that we should have done a better job introducing who we are. And how we intend to support our Jersey City friends and neighbors. To be direct, let me first say that I am a cancer survivor. Being diagnosed with cancer was devastating to not only me, but my family. With grit and determination, I was one of the fortunate ones to beat it. Today, I'm happy to say that I'm cancer free and along my personal journey, as well as in speaking to others. I realize the impact of cannabis as a medicine. As a result, I'm now an advocate for medicinal and adult use done responsibly. In two thousand eighteen, lifelong family friends came together, Benny and Stacy Shapty and myself. With our diverse backgrounds and we established Oceanfront Holdings. One of the core values of the company is giving back to the individuals and entire communities through our community impact initiatives. Our community impact plan is comprised of multiple initiatives. We are working with several organizations, including the Hope House and St. Lucy's Emergency Shelters. Hudson County Court Appointed Special Advocates, also known as CASA, and the Liberty Humane Society. With the Hope House in St. Lucy's Shelter, we have been working with program director Lori Cherry. As you know, Jersey City residents of these two facilities are homeless and some of the most vulnerable residents in Jersey City. Director, Director Cherry told us about an immediate need for pillows and blankets at the shelters. We immediately took action by donating new pillows and blankets for every bed in these facilities. We are committing to continuing to supply these types of necessities to both organizations. Additionally, we are forming a partnership with an amazing, amazing charity called Hudson County CASA. This is a nonprofit that fosters child advocacy. Trained volunteers advocate for the best interests of abused and neglected children, get them placed into permanent homes. It is our intention to donate up to five percent of gross profits to organizations that support women and children. Finally, we are working with the Liberty Humane Society. In our discussions with Director Irene Borngraber. We will be supporting their efforts to supply necessary resources to thousands of animals in need of shelter, veterinary care and training. While we are focused on these organizations, we are also open to receiving recommendations from community members and public officials. On supporting other community based organizations. I can speak on behalf of all of the partners at Oceanfront, myself, Benny and Stacy Shapty. When I say we have a passion for supporting and giving back to the community that we are a part of. Thank you for your time tonight, as it was important for me and my partners that one of us went on the record about our commitment to giving back to the city of Jersey City. Again, commissioners, thank you for your service to Jersey City and we look forward to do. Doing our part to make Jersey City an even better place for all residents, especially those in need of a second chance, like the second chance I was given. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Handy. We appreciate it. Anybody questions for Ms. Handy? Okay, thank you. We appreciate your comments. Counsel, anything else?
No, no, Mr. Chairman, that wraps up our testimony. We believe Oceanfront has satisfied the conditional use criteria on this application and we respectfully request. Approval of this location for the operation of adult use cannabis. So thank you very much and we appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you, counsel. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. I see Ms. Daly's hand raised already. If you'd like to comment on this application, please raise your hands. If you are calling in, you can press star nine.
Voted Miss Daly.
Thank you, Ken.
Hi, Jean, if you're there, you can, there we go.
Yeah, I'm unmuted, but for whatever reason, I can't get the screen to work. Wait, start video. That might do it.
There you go.
Perfect.
Okay.
I hear you. I just want to swear you in, okay? Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Yes, my name is Jean Daly. It's spelled J E A N N E. And Daly is spelled D A L Y.
Thank you.
Ms. Daly, good evening. We usually have a five minute limit. Can we get you done in three? We have.
I can get you, I can get it done in one minute.
I love it. Yeah, we have a gigantic agenda in front of us.
I know you do.
Yeah, we're trying to do three minutes tonight if we can.
Yeah, good man. Everything? I hope not on everything. Anyway, let me just stick to this quickly. The one thing I did note was that you mentioned that there was a radius that was a radius, a radial drawing rather, that was done. Regarding any schools in that area and there are none. However, there are some child learning centers that are diagonally across the street. On the intersection of Newark and Erie Street. And I was wondering how this is taken into account, these child daycare centers or learning centers. That's my end of my comment. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Daly. I can actually address counsel if that's okay. We've been through this many times, town miss daily. And way too many for me to even talk about. In, in the land development ordinance, schools are defined as K through twelve. And they fall within a drug free school zone. So anything outside of that, the planning board has no jurisdiction. We cannot. Limit anything based on a daycare would have to be a K through twelve school. Okay, with that said, let's move on with public comment if we could. Anybody else that wants to comment on this application?
Voted Catherine M.
Okay, thank you. And once again, if you're calling in and you'd like to comment on this, please press star nine.
I'm Ms. Moore, swear in if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Catherine Moore, K A T H R Y N M O O R E.
Thank you.
It's more, good evening. We have three minutes for you.
Just one quick clarification. The architect was talking about delivery on the Columbus Drive side. Are they getting a class six license or are class five? And are deliveries allowed with a class five retail?
Probably, um, the deliveries need to have. Let me, let me check the, the class five section.
I've been reading all ninety pages of that ordinance over the past couple of days, educating myself quickly for what's happening for at one fifty, but. I remember class six was delivery.
Yeah, if I, if I might chime in, Frank, I think this question might be better suited for you. I think what. Dennis was referring to is delivery of product.
Correct.
To your, your facility to sell, not delivery in the sense of a class six delivery service.
Correct.
Is that correct? And can you please answer that question?
Yeah, no, that is correct. This is product delivered to be sold at the retail location. It just happens to be that the delivery entrance is in the rear. at the retail location. It just happens to be that the delivery entrance is in the rear, on the other side, that's all.
Alright, great, that's, that's all I needed clarified.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thanks.
Alright, anybody else, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. And once again, if you're calling in and you'd like to comment on this application, please press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody else from public?
Sure, I see no more public, I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, public is closed. Matt, do you have anything you want to add?
There was several items that I sent out to the Commissioners that were submitted to us that were either revised plans that Dennis went over today, or addendums to some of their additional submittal items. Also, through testimony, we learned that the main entrance is not along Christopher Columbus, but along Newark Avenue, so the map and the memo provided by staff is incorrect, and we just wanted to put that on the record. There are six conditions in that staff memo which we recommend, should the board make a motion to approve. I just wanted to ask if Council has reviewed those with their client and if they would agree to those conditions.
Is there, is there a way to just quickly, Mr. Ward, go through those?
Sure.
Thank you.
One, one moment. I can just, I think it might be easiest for me to read them into the record, so one is all materials and color selections shall be shown on final plans, no change to facade or site design, including materials, as well as any changes that may be required of the Office of Construction Code shall be permitted without consultation with an approval by planning staff. All testimony given by the applicant and their expert witnesses in accordance with this application shall be binding.
We agree with that.
Prior to the issuance of any permit, the applicant shall seek and receive approval by the Cannabis Control Board and Cannabis Regulatory Commission.
We agree.
Architect of Record shall provide an affidavit confirming that development is built in accordance with the approved plans prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy.
We agree.
The memorialized resolution shall be recorded with the Office of the County Register and made part of the deed. In addition, documentation of the same shall be submitted to Division of City Planning prior to application for construction permits.
We agree.
And the applicant shall comply with all conditions of approval set forth on the record by the planning board or the Division of City Planning Staff.
Agreed, and thank you very much for reviewing those.
Matt, if I could just jump in on the certificate of occupancy, can we also add that that would cover a temporary certificate of occupancy?
Yes.
Council, are you okay with that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so this time we'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve case P22-049 as presented to the board this evening, together with staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Thank you, Vidya.
A motion to approve Commissioner Dr. Gonzalez.
I will be abstaining.
Commissioner Torres.
Out of all the applications we have listened to, the application. Little confusion. I appreciate the outreach the community does, but within the community. But the last time when it was presented to us, it seemed that they were connected to the community. No members or people in the community as they presented their application. So there's a lot of little things like that. I'm not sure what they grabbed to do with that back room as a display. Talked about something else, I don't know why we were talking about that the last time. And so with that, I'm still have little uncertainties on this application, so I'm gonna vote no.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Nein.
Commissioner Waterman.
Based on to my understanding is that they have to go before the CCB Board too, correct?
That is correct.
And that is when pretty much we will really find, well, they will find out concerning the community, give backs and things like that, that's their role. Am I correct? Matt, that's the way it's gonna go?
I think that that will be the more, more of the focus of their, of their purview, yes.
That'd be more their focus, okay. So, so with that in mind, I'll vote yes, because this is just the first step, because the CCB Board should really be the board to really investigate concerning the give backs and things for the community. Because a lot of people come and saying they are part of the community, but they're just coming. You know, they're just coming, but they haven't really contributed to the community. So I believe it's the CCB Board to make sure that they have contributed, they've been a part of the community. Not just coming, because now the floodgates are open. There are people who have applications that really been a part of this community, and we want to make sure that they are the ones that still stay in the community. So with that in mind, I'll vote yes, based on the structure and things like that, but the CCB Board will definitely be the board that finds out exactly what are they contributing, contributing to the community.
Commissioner Gangdon.
I just want to echo the same sentiments from Council President Waterman. Ultimately, the CCB Board will look into the community give backs. I'll vote aye.
Chairman Langston.
Yeah, I agree with Council President. As far as the planning board's concerned, we're really just checking off boxes. We're making sure that these things are in place. And again, this is the first step. They still have to go to the C and then come back to the CCB Board. So, you know, that's where everything's really gonna be gone through with, with a magnifying glass as far as community engagement and and workforce development and, you know, such, but it does, it does satisfy the planning board's requirements, so I'm gonna vote aye.
Motion carries five in favor, two against, and one abstain.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you, you too, good luck to you. Alright, let's move on to new business is, item nine is case P21-142. That's a Section 31 review, it's a review and discussion of the public plaza design for updates, the Exchange Place Pedestrian Plaza at Hudson Street and Montgomery Street, wrapping north to Christopher Columbus Drive. And Santo, if you could, can you just educate the board on a Section 31 review, actually what the board's role is here?
Certainly, Chairman.
Thank you.
Section 31 review, as we've heard in the past, is a courtesy review by the board. The board is looking to see if the application is in conformance with and for lack of a better term, jives with the zoning ordinances, the site plan ordinance, et cetera, et cetera, so. If the board finds that it does not, and there are issues with the application as presented, that the board would like to see some things done differently, the board can find that and find that it does not meet and comport with the applicable ordinances in regards mostly to site plan type issues. But it is a courtesy review, the applicant is free to consider those comments and proceed in the way the applicant feels appropriate, so.
Okay, thanks, Council. So at the end of the presentation, what our vote basically entails is just like Santo said, we are either agreeing or disagreeing that it complies with the zoning. The applicant is under no I don't know the words I'm looking for here, I'm forgetting.
Obligation, Chairman.
Obligation, there you go. So the applicant's under no obligation to take those comments and change their application. Our vote tonight is not binding, but we certainly have the ability to comment and make recommendations. Okay, who is presenting for us here?
So, good evening, Chairman Langston, Commissioners, Donald Pepe from Scrancy-Hollandbeck, on behalf of the Exchange Place Alliance District Management Corporation. He's an applicant on this, on this project. As noted, we're proposing a pedestrian plaza at the base of Montgomery Street. And this is a Section 31 review. Just bringing it back a little bit on the history of this particular site. Three years ago, when we began this process, three and three change years ago, the area surrounding the Caton Monument was essentially a parking lot. One of the other trigger, and, and, and aside from being a parking lot, it was a dangerous place where cars were interacting with pedestrians on a regular basis. It's a very busy area, it's an entree to the path station. Another trigger that brought up the desire to improve this area had to do with the Port Authority. They had gotten some grant money, and, you know, they were looking to provide enhanced security measures to protect the path station. But much as the Port Authority has liked to do, those measures were somewhat institutional, looked a little bit like a prison, some of the earlier designs, and they didn't take aesthetics, they didn't take pedestrian maneuverability into account. So when we saw those plans, those early plans from the Port Authority, the Exchange Place Alliance took it upon itself to endeavor to find a better way to provide both security, to preserve, protect, and beautify the Caton Monument, to preserve the exchange place as a place that can be used for public meetings, as festivals indefinitely, and to enhance the aesthetics and the safety of the plaza. The enabling ordinance for the Exchange Place Alliance specifically provides that we are to undertake improvements designed to increase the safety or attractiveness of the district, and, and that's the enabling ordinance 16-176 that created the Exchange Place Alliance. Most recently, the City Council of Jersey City designated this area a pedestrian mall, which means that motor vehicle traffic was prohibited, that was ordinance 16-176. We've undertaken, or as I mentioned, over the last three years, to design a project that achieves all of the goals that we set out to achieve. We engaged with all of the neighboring property owners, stakeholders, various city and state offices, and the general public to develop a final design, which we're pleased to present you, we're actually super excited to present to you tonight. We had five public meetings dedicated in part to the public plaza design. Those were the monthly or, excuse me, quarterly Exchange Place meetings. The plans have been up on our website for the better part of a year and a half. We had a community meeting that was published in the newspaper and provided mail notice to adjoining property owners that was on August 19th, 2020. We had individual meetings with Matt Calley and the owners of Plaza 10 and the Hyatt House Hotel to address their concerns. We had multiple, multiple design meetings with New Jersey Transit, Port Authority, City Planning, City Fire, Public Safety, Cultural Affairs, City Engineering, Historic, Paulus Hook Association, Powerhouse Neighborhood Association, Colgate Commercial Property Owners Association, and the Committee for the Conservation of the Caton Monument and Historic Objects. I have two witnesses tonight, although I think that I only need to present one, Tom Carmen from Malillo and Bauer, who is our landscape architect, who took the lion's share of the aesthetic design of the project. Tom?
Well, good evening, everybody.
Hi, Tom. I'll just, I'll swear you in, just because that's how we do it. Raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Sure, it's Thomas S. Carmen, C A R M A N.
Thank you.
And just one second, before I qualify, Mr. Carmen, Council President Waterman is going to recuse on this matter. So with that said, Mr. Carmen, your license is current tonight in the state of New Jersey?
It is.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and good evening, Board Commissioners. So this evening, I will walk you through, let me share my screen here, I will walk you through the the design to, to transpose the, the current plaza space that as Mr. Pepe says, is a bit more, provides more priority to the vehicle than the pedestrian, with the goal to provide pedestrian safety, flexibility for events, and to respect the existing Caton Monument. I'll present an overall plan, and then I will also share some 3D images of the, of the design. But before that, let me just show you an, an existing aerial photograph of the, the plaza, so we're seeing the plaza down in the, the lower portion, Hyatt House, right down here, adjacent to the light rail, Starbucks, waterfront walkway, the existing path station, and then to the north, Christopher Columbus Drive.
Mr. Carmen, really quick, I'm just seeing the date on the document here, so I believe there might be some additional renderings in this package than what was provided for the data portal for the distribution deadline, so I just want to make sure we mark this presentation into the record.
Okay.
Can you tell me how many, how many pages in total? It looks like 21 at the bottom.
That's correct, there are 21 sheets.
Okay.
And I believe the only, just, the only difference is, as we go through here, you'll see that I refer back to the plan numerous times to show where that view is. I believe that's what the difference in the amount of exhibits are.
Okay, and so Santo, I believe that would make this A1?
Yes, it would. And Santo, just also for the record, I mean, we did provide notice of, of this application, even though I don't believe it was necessary, again, I have abundance, of course, of caution, so if we could mark that notice as A2.
Let's do it. A2 will be the notice. A1 will be the plan. For slideshow. Great. So now I will move on to three existing condition images. So this is standing at Hudson, looking back towards the east, we see the light rail off to the right, and then the, the Caton Monument down towards the terminus. And here, what we're seeing also is the ability for vehicles to freely drive within the space, circulate around, not really defining pedestrian circulation, which can create plenty of pedestrian conflicts. Here, a view looking to the west, we're essentially at the waterfront walkway, looking back towards the monument, looking towards the west. And here, we're seeing the, the inappropriate nature of vehicles being able to circulate around the monument or parking right at the waterfront walkway. Last existing conditions photo is we're looking towards Christopher Columbus Drive, where the, the waterfront walkway makes its way past Harbor Side and the Hyatt Regency here. And again, we're seeing how cars can stack and park down in this area, and really pedestrian circulation is, is a leftover for the cars. So now, we have the, the overall design that we're proposing. So with, with Hudson all the way on the left-hand side, Grundy Pier on the right with the path station. We see in the, the lower left-hand corner, the light rail to remain as is. Drop-off area for the, the Hyatt House. And then controlling the vehicular circulation coming in, what we're doing is we're still respecting that boulevard nature that comes down along Montgomery, and providing a clear access point in to circulate to the Hyatt House, as well as a channelized vehicular area to get to the service area and to the court to the east. Access coming out, providing direct access to the, to again, to Montgomery. Now, overall plaza space, we're defining a zone to the, to the west over here, where providing great flexibility for a stage to be put over there for open nature, for- providing great flexibility for a stage to be put over there for open nature, for tents to be put up for flexibility, having the ability to, to put some tables and chairs to gather within these areas, but also providing good, clear pedestrian circulation to the path station, from the path station to the light rail and around. As Mr. Pepe indicated, one of the requirements from the Port Authority is to, to secure the path station. And by implementing some bollards and some planters along the, the southern edge here, we have this, this large free expanse of public plaza space. Additionally, incorporating some green where the existing Caton Monument is and defining a plaza space with a larger oval of decorative pavers that opens up to the existing waterfront walkway. The, the monument space itself includes a, a large curvilinear seat wall that also defines the space. The statue itself is situated in the exact same location that it is today. A child's play area is located just to the south of the path station. The waterfront walkway is in compliance with the DEP requirements in terms of the widths and circulation. City bikes located just adjacent the north side of Exchange Plaza Center here. And then defining a crossing for the pedestrians along the waterfront walkway. Now, these plans were all submitted to, to City Engineering and what we've done is we've provided a graphic right here that shows the emergency vehicle access, so fire truck or EMS vehicle would be able to circulate in through this space. There are bollards that would retract down and then can circulate around in front of the path station and then further back out to Christopher Columbus Drive. Now, in conversations with City Engineering and the Fire Department, they, they had requested that we analyze the opportunity as this dashed line in the upper left or upper right shows to study if we can provide access as an alternate out that way, which we believe we will be able to accommodate and we will be happy to work with them on that. So now let me, let me walk you through some of the, the three D views of, of the overall core space. So I'll just continue to repeat this plan and then show where the view is taken. So you will see a view over here from essentially the light rail area looking towards the northwest. Here we see that light rail in the, the lower right with clear pedestrian circulation going across to a plaza space where table and chairs are located, bollard line with planters defining an edge, and then larger pedestrian plaza for people to freely move about, and then the plaza space with the Caton Monument. The next view that we will have is more just, just up from the previous one, and this will be a little bit more eye level as opposed to bird's eye view. Here we're looking across, again, we're seeing that pedestrian accessway. This is where those retractable bollards would be for an emergency service vehicle to pull in. And you can see how the, the site furnishing is also situated so that there would be clear access coming in. And then towards the end, you can see prominently the, the monument in its existing location. Our next view is essentially at the, the Hyatt House drop-off area. Here seeing a bollard defining area for a drop-off and then looking across where you see the two pedestrian circulation points across the vehicular channelized way that is eighteen feet and wide, wide, so we've really narrowed that down. And then again, in the background, we're seeing the monument as well as you're, you're catching a glimpse of the Grundy Pier in the background. Next view will be from essentially the waterfront walkway, looking back towards the, the northeast, northwest. Here we see how the oval plaza space around the monument exists and the, the seat wall that I mentioned, the curved bench that provides ample seating, and then also how the planting extends towards the waterfront walkway. So we've used and we've incorporated some lawn within this area also to, to really expand that area. So that way there's plenty of room for, for visitors as well as bringing that space, so it does feel intimate when there are, is a smaller amount of people. The, the next view that I will show you is essentially from the, just below the path station where we'll see the, the playground in the foreground. Here we are looking out that way with the children's play, playground in the foreground, looking across to the plaza space, the, the monument, and then out down towards the, the light rail in the, in the background. The last view that I have is just at, again, at Hudson with our back to to Montgomery. Looking in with a, a placemaking element over here, just identifying Exchange Place and then the seating that we see flanking the, the bollard location coming in and then the monument prominently located towards the waterfront. So that provides the, the overview of, of the, the exciting improvements that we're proposing at Exchange Place.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Carmen. The only question I would have, the bollards, you said they're retractable or are they removable?
The, the bollards are retractable. There are, being that it is the Port Authority, there is a specific rating that these bollards have to meet. So many of them are fixed in place and then there are some that are retractable.
Okay, and how are they operated? Is there somebody there twenty-four seven that can retract those for emergency vehicles as we know? Emergencies, you know, don't retract working hours all the time?
Right, so the, the logistics of that we will, will fully work through, but often the emergency vehicle has a control that will be able to bring them down.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's it for me. That was my main concern. Anybody else? Any questions for Mr. Carmen?
Just Commissioner Torres?
Go ahead, Eddie.
I, I really, I really love what you're doing. I work in the area sometimes and and it's great to see trying to control the traffic in that area. My question though is, are there's going to be any timeline for the office builders, the Hyatt Port Authority to have deliveries and movement of trucks that come all day long in that area? How would they get you know, the Exchange Place ten, all those builders, they gets always constant, constant deliveries in that area? And then that on that street, what are we going to do with them now that all day long? Does that have a kind of plan you have for that? Commissioner Torres, to some, to some degree, deliveries will still be achievable through the eighteen-foot wide pathway that we've provided, which is going to be over by the Starbucks and the Hyatt House side of the operation. That's not going to be restricted as to Plaza ten and the other areas, they're no longer going to be able to get deliveries in this area. It's been designated as a pedestrian plaza by the City Council. All of those buildings have alternative means with, with which to get access. Okay.
Okay, I have a question. How about transportation for persons with disability and parking around there?
The site, I mean, Tom, the site's been designed completely to be handicap accessible, correct?
Certainly, the, the whole plaza itself is ADA accessible.
And parking for handicapped or anything?
There is not specific parking for the plaza itself. Vehicle, vehicular parking is, is no longer permitted within this space, however, there is parking at the adjacent buildings.
And, and just to be clear, Commissioner, because it is important for people who are trying to access the path station, there's still going to be drop-off potential down at the end of Christopher Columbus and on York Street. That would be accessible right up to the, you know, right up to the waterfront walkway. But parking will be prohibited throughout the pedestrian plaza area except for on that eighteen, i- i- it's really not going to be wide enough, but I guess short-term on that eighteen-foot drive path. And, and that you could get access all the way through to the walkway through that path as well, but we're not encouraging parking here. This is going to become a pedestrian plaza.
Mr. Pepe, are we going to hear with respect to the master plan and the, what appears to me, the obvious concept of pedestrian friendly in lieu of vehicular traffic?
Counsel, I, I had not planned on preventing, on presenting any testimony with respect to the compatibility with the master plan. I don't know if any of the cities planners have any input with respect to that. We've been sharing these designs with them for quite some time. But I, and I believe, you know, one of the vision zero is a big impetus for the city right now and, and an important aspect of the master plan itself, which is to provide for pedestrian safety.
Without a shadow of a doubt, counsel.
And, and those are elements that were, you know, that, that were accomplishing clearly. I think that to head off other questions that I can anticipate, the improvements will be constructed and maintained by the Exchange Place District Management Corporation and funded by the Exchange Place Alliance.
Okay, thank you, counsel. All right, um, anything else, counsel? Or is that your presentation?
That, I have my civil engineer here in case there's any questions, Gabrielle Gornelli, but that is my presentation.
Okay, um, yeah, I think I'm satisfied with the, the presentation of Mr. Carmen. I don't know if I would need anything extra. I'll open it up to the board if anybody wants a civil engineer. If anybody has any extra questions for a civil engineer?
Chairman, not the civil engineer, but I just had one quick question. I'm looking at the emergency vehicle route. I'm assuming this was addressed, but would a route accommodate all forms of vehicles, you know, fire engines or larger vehicles as well?
Yes, that was, that was designed to accommodate fire engines and, and we did share that with City Engineering as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Peter.
And for the record, we met with the Office of Emergency Management as well.
Don, real quick, I think one thing that might be relevant for this civil engineer is the project does not meet the green area ratio. My understanding is a lot of this is based on requirements for vehicle loads and materials that are needed to support these emergency vehicles and just the heavy, nature of the heavy use of the site. I don't know if the civil engineer could speak to that a little bit?
Sure, we can ask Gabrielle to come in and speak to it, but Ms. Clark, I, I think as you'll recall, when we originally had a substantial additional green area, in fact, most of the original design was a, a lawn area that was altered most recently at the request of City Planning and City Engineering. And even that plan, strangely enough, did not meet the green area ratio requirement. So taking the plaza from a complete one hundred percent impervious area and adding a lawn that covered seventy-five percent of it, the plan, the, still did not meet the requirements, really just because of the way the requirements are designed, they're designed to address buildings, not necessarily open plaza areas. That's my understanding, but I, I don't know if you concur, and Gabrielle, I don't know if you've have any additional input. Can she be promoted?
Yeah, and I'll just swear you in before you speak, okay? If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
For the record, could you just state and spell your name, please?
Sure, my name is Gabrielle Gornelli, G.A.B. R.I.E.L.L.E., Gornelli, G.O.R., N is in Nancy, E.L.L.I.
Thank you.
Your license, civil engineer, your license is current?
Yes.
And that's in the great state of New Jersey, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Yeah, I could speak a little bit on that, yes. Mallory is correct, a, a lot of this area, we, we did need to have structurally, to be able to support the emergency vehicles. But I can speak, you know, generally, my understanding of the green area ratio, it's to encourage, you know, i- it's to encourage these flood prevention measures on, on sites that have heavy development like buildings, things like that. That's why you see green roofs gives you a lot of credit for green area ratio in the Jersey City ordinance, detention tanks, which are not required when you're adjacent to the, the river itself. Things like having certain fixtures inside your building. A, a, a park by nature is flood resistant, resilient design because when, when you have a, a type of flood like we have here, I'm in a tidal flood area where it's typically a hurricane or something like that, where we know, we know the flood is coming in advance, you can evacuate these type of areas and, and you allow the, the floodwaters to come to this zone, you know, unlike a building or something like that where there's really going to be a lot of property damage. In open space, it is really a flood resistant design by nature. So while we're not meeting the green area ratio with the design, you know, it, it, we believe that it is, it meets the intention because it is a flood resistance design because it's a, a park.
And this probably seems obvious, but just for the sake of the record, would you confirm that you are increasing the permeability or the permeability of the overall site from where it stands today in the proposed design?
Yes, the nature of the improvements will increase pervious cover on the site, so, so we will be bettering the stormwater management on-site as well as by not allowing vehicles on the majority of the site. It's going to allow for cleaner stormwater runoff coming on the site because the vehicles, they, when they mix with the rainwater, they, they created dirt, you know, more dirty rainwater.
Thank you. And then the only other question I had for Don's team is just for clarity for the board. Can you just confirm that the current design does allow for community events similar to what has been done in the past year with the Fourth of July event and other local festivals can be accommodated in the proposed configuration?
Yeah, so that was actually a very significant concern for the administration, for planning and for us. The project has been designed to accommodate a full-size stage, which has been used with respect to the Fourth of July celebrations year over year. It's also been designed to accommodate a smaller stage up front and several, several festival tents, I think upwards of forty. I don't know, Tom, if you have a, one of those slides handy just to show what the layout with the stage would look like?
I can, Don, we, we, as Don is, is indicating, we did multiple layouts. This is one of those layouts that shows a stage that is the smaller stage, that's like fourteen by thirty that would allow for people to congregate within the plaza area. And then we show, this has about twenty-two tents, but we've done multiple different scenarios where we had upwards of forty tents and then a situation where maybe the, the stage is placed in this location as done for the Fourth of July kind of event, so it's very high in nature.
Tom, we studied the truck movements that would be necessary to place those items as well?
Correct, that's another thing that related to the retractable bollard locations, just making sure that there was adequate circulation to get these stages into these, these locations. And we ran it for a smaller stage, which we're showing here as well as the larger stage.
Mr. Carmen, Uh, Mr. Carmen. Did you do the work on both stages being there? Or just just singly the large stage or the small stage?
We we had the, we have a plan that actually shows a larger stage within this location as well. So. Yes.
But but no, my question is, is there room for two stages? Or are we just talking about either the small stage or the large stage, not both?
Yeah, so I think if 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 there was to be another stage, I think the opportunity to do another one set up on the Grundy Pier could be possible.
Okay.
Chairman Langston, we're not trying to dictate the festival setups. Those would be up to the people, you know, but I think that we're showing the smaller stage here from the plan that I recall having seen with respect to the larger stage, which is much further back. You could accommodate both. I think if you wanted to, you could probably accommodate three stages.
Okay. All right, excellent. Thank you. All right, Mallory, anything else? Are you satisfied? No, still have you there?
You muted.
Sorry, I'm talking to myself over here. I think that's everything. I just wanted to make sure the board had clarity on before we move to public.
Okay, thank you. Um, so before we open public, I'll just open it up to the board one more time. Anybody else have any questions, concerns? That haven't been addressed?
Chair, just before you open it to the public, I want everybody to understand that this is a section thirty-one review. The reason it is a section thirty-one review is because that is the section number under the M L U L in which this type of applicant would appear before the board. And the board's role is to provide a review. And that review is limited in scope. The reason I asked the question regarding the master plan, obviously, this is what is envisioned for this particular property. It is supposed to be a pedestrian plaza. So this is what the applicant is proposing. This is what their vision after a lot of work seems to be. They've discussed this in community meetings. They've discussed this with the Office of Emergency Management and various other engineering, planning and departments here in the city. So this is the proposal. And I think that the applicant has more than explained how they came to this proposal as opposed to just all green space and lawn. So I personally am satisfied as far as how it rectify or reconciles with our zoning ordinances. And particularly with the master plan and the way the vision zero portion of the master plan is achieved. So with that, we can open it up to public, but that's that's the role of the board here this evening and we can, we can move to public comment.
Right, thanks, counsel. And Mr. Carmen, can you please stop your screen share?
I can.
Thank you, sir. All right, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public and you'd like to comment on this application. I see a number of hands raised already. If you could, please raise your hand. If you were calling in and you'd like to comment, please press star nine to raise your hand.
Okay, promoted Margaret McGrath.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Margaret. I just want to swear you in before you speak, okay? If you could raise your right hand. You swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
My M A R G A R E T M C G R A T H.
Thank you.
McGrath.
I'm sorry, I was muted. Ms. McGrath, good evening. We have three minutes for you.
Okay, um, I'm opposed of the seven feet high obstruction around Katyn Monument and plantings, especially, I'm talking about seven feet high. This so-called, you know, the wall. This obstruction is not only insult to the monument, but for the people who in two thousand eighteen, including myself, my husband. For whole nine months, we fought for this monument to sustain in this place. And we, I believe that this is this creating that such a so-called wall would not allow us to have meetings or celebrations. And memorials. This is my concern.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McGrath.
Thank you.
Okay, promoting Richard Branca.
All right, thank you.
Richard, if you're there, you can unmute and turn your video on.
Am I now on?
No.
We hear you, sir. We just don't see your your face there.
Let's see my face, see if I can figure out how to do that.
Yeah, and if you got somebody else in the room with you, if they could just turn their volume down.
I don't know if I can get my.
Just right next to where you unmuted, there's a stop bit. All right, great. I see you now. I just want to swear you in, okay? If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Richard Branca, B R A N C A.
Thank you.
Mr. Branca, I have three minutes for you.
Okay, very quickly now, get to the point. I am involved with the Concord Hospital and Hotel Manager. And I'm also involved as an investor. And we had two issues. We have talked to Mr. Pepe about this and Mr. DiMarco. One was we want to make sure that it's the work is done in phases so that we, you know, because this is our front entrance to our hotel, which is a twenty-fifth six-room hotel, as you know, the Hyatt House. So we want to make sure that is done in phases so we can figure out how to get our guests in and out. And the other one is I did talk to Mr. Pepe about the entranceway that we if we if we park parallel, we only have like one or two cars, maybe three cars a maximum, and we need more like six or seven. To so we wanted a slanted parking instead of that parallel parking. And Mr. Pepe said he thought we could do that. Is no, the plan doesn't show it.
Okay, anything else? And but we'll get those questions answered for you. Anything else, sir?
No, that was it. You know, as far as the phase, phase work and the slanted parking in front. Other than that, I think we can work this to design.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Pepe, anything you want to address?
Yeah, so Chairman Langston, we we are committed to phasing the project to maintain access to the Hyatt Hotel. Obviously, it's a critical issue. I can't say that there will come a period for a very short period of time where access will have to be prohibited so that we can lay the paving areas in front. But we are developing, we have developed a phasing plan that will maximize access and minimize any interruptions. And we're committed to that. With respect to parking, we have competing desires here actually that came from city engineering, which was to shrink the width of the access roadway. That's providing access to the Hyatt House to eighteen feet to provide greater area for the actual pedestrians. So, you know, we've given the Hyatt its own dedicated drop-off area that can potentially stage, I think, far more than two cars. But we've taken those things into consideration and weighed all the competing requirements and and we believe that the pedestrians take precedence.
Okay, thank you, counsel. And I agree, I think the master plan spells that out. Okay, if we could, let's move on with public comment, please.
Okay, promoted Gudziah Porwit.
Hi, yeah.
How you doing? Are you able to turn your video on?
Yeah, yes, I do.
I lost you.
Um, I could, I tried to be to to get as close as possible.
Sure, yeah, I just want to be able to see your face.
Ah, you know what? My camera, I mean, oh, yeah, hold on. Yes, yes, yes.
All right, great. I could see you. I can hear you. I just want to swear you in, okay? If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I will.
Record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Yes, my name is Goshap Porwit, P O R W I T.
Thank you.
I am, yes.
Good evening, we have three minutes for you.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners and everybody else. I am retired surveyor and landscape architect from Pennsylvania. And also I represent Polish-American community. I love the location of the Katyn Monument as it is right now. It is properly exposed on the and actually picture of it on it with the background of New York City is just gorgeous and represents wonderful, beautiful Jersey City. My I my concern is about the size of the place for the Polish community, Polish organization to celebrate. And actually, the April is that today is eighty-second anniversary of that terrible genocide. So, so again, I'm concerned about the size of the place to celebrate. And also, I'm very concerned about the site, size of the trees. The trees are there shown on the plan, at least five huge trees and some smaller ones. Additionally, to the berm and this very high bench, I believe this is too much of an obstacle to show the monument the proper way. So that's my concern. Thank you very much for the opportunity to raise my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Porwit. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Promoting April, April Wit.
Hello? Can you hear us? We can't hear you, unfortunately. We can't hear you. We can't. Now we can't hear anything you're saying. We can't hear you.
Can't hear you, sir. Are you?
If can you use your presumably your wife's computer?
No, we can't hear you, sir. Perhaps you just have your presumably your wife raise her hand again and we can promote you on that computer.
No, just go to your wife's computer. Use the other computer.
Yeah, yes, please. Thank you. We'll 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 get to you, sir. Cam, can we move forward?
Promoting Andrzej Berghard.
And Mr. Berghard, if you're there, you can unmute and turn your video on.
Okay, can you hear me now?
I can hear you and see you. I just want to swear you in, all right? If you can raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Andrzej Burka, that spells A N D R Z E J. Last name, B U R G H A R D T.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Berghard, good evening. We have three minutes for you.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for giving your time to listen to this case tonight. I am going to address the board with regard to the from the perspective of Polish-American community for whom the Katyn Monument has a very important value. As by means of introduction, the Katyn Monument was erected in Jersey City in early nineties. Nineties to commemorate the genocide committed by Soviet communist regime against Polish people. In the forest near Katyn, a village in Russia closed the border of Belarus. About fourteen thousand Polish army officers held by Soviets prisoners of war. In addition to about eight thousand civilians were murdered in nineteen forty. In two thousand and one, a special plaque was added to the monument as it was designated to also commemorate the tragedy of the nine eleven terrorist attack. Then in twenty ten, another plaque was added to commemorate the explosive destruction of the airplane with the president of Poland on board over Smolensk in Russia, which with the growing certainty was carried out by the orders of the Russian authorities. Just like in Katyn in nineteen forty. The Katyn Monument stands on in Jersey City's Exchange Plaza as an ominous memento of the horrors which Marxism, totalitarianism and terrorism bring to on freedom, peace and welfare of humanity. It's our duty to let it stand there prominently and with due dignity to remind us to act in such ways that we and our future generations do not have to suffer from these horrors again. The war in Ukraine today signifies that humanity forgets these lessons too quickly and easily. Now, I will point out what specifically is wrong with the time. The plan of redevelopment of Exchange Plaza appears to be constructed according to two main design principles. I mean, the specificity of the monument. To obscure the Katyn Monument from public sight to the greatest extent possible. And B to make gatherings and ceremonies at the monument as difficult as possible by limiting space for participants as well as access from the front. In addition to hiding these ceremonies from public view. The oval paved space around the monument is way too small to allow the typical number of ceremony participants, which was hundred. Where is the overflow crowd to stand? Was there an intent to split participants into several isolated groups? Number three, the oval is laid out in such a way that the monument stands in the wrong spot of it. The front of the monument is facing west towards the city, not towards the river. Thus, such design appears to be an intentional mockery of both the monument and the celebration participants. There is only a very limited space, about twelve feet left between the front of the monument and high benches with which block access to the front of the monument.
Mr. Berghard, I apologize. That's your three minutes, sir.
Well, thank you very much for for hearing me.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we're promoting Ms. Porwit.
Okay.
She comes on, I would volunteer, Mr. Chairman Langston, that we've we've incorporated into our plans that are going to hire a conservationist to clean, restore, repair the Katyn Monument. It is absolutely going to be protected during the construction process. We revere the statute as well.
Okay, thank you. And, okay, we do have Mr. Porwit.
Yes, yes, he said my computer, so thank you so much.
Excellent.
Mr. Porwit, I just want to swear you in, okay? If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I will.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Andrzej Porwit, A N D R Z E J, P O R W I T.
Thank you. Mr. Porwit, good evening. We have three minutes for you.
Okay, great. I am a retired professional engineer in many states of east coast of the United States. And we've experienced construction experience, not only in the United States, but in Germany and Poland. My major concern about this design now, it's a trap. My major concern about this design now, it's a trap for human being in case of panic. People may end up in this, in this big berm, behind the berm. And nobody will be able to let them out. This huge mistake, mental mistake in this design. It has to be open because people have to have ability to flood around the monument. There's a lot of ceremonies, Poles like to have meetings. And God forbid, some terrorist attack or whatever, we may end up with thousands of dead people. So I would really recommend removing this berm, removing this wall and leave the plaza open. This something, as it is, there's something else. There's thousands of Hyatt Hotels in the world. This one in Jersey City is peculiar because it has this monument in front of the building. So everybody will know, okay, this is Jersey City because Hyatt Hotel is over there. So don't cover it. Don't create traps for human people. Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Porwit. We appreciate your time.
Promoted Val.
Hey Val, how you doing?
Good. How you doing?
Doing all right. I'll swear you in, okay? Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Of course. It's Valery Wierchowski. That's V A L E R I Y. Last name Wierchowski. That's V E R K H O V S K I Y.
Thank you. Mr. Wierchowski.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening. Three minutes for you, sir.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. I have great concerns with this project. As an attendee of the Fourth of July, well, pre-COVID, Fourth of July. Events and other events that happened at this plaza. My biggest concern, now renovations obviously was a great thing. And the thought here is, is really, you know, I, I, I like the thought, I like the materials that are being used and the bowlers are a good thing and all that. My biggest concern is it shrinks the area. And I anticipate there'll probably be more attendees in the future than last events. Prior events, there was no space to move. And to shrink this area further, I think creates hazards. It's, it's, it's going to create a dangerous environment. I do highly think that this area needs to be open. And you see we completely open, not cut off like it is in this, in this design. But overall, I think the look of it is good. The three D images were pretty cool. But that's my biggest concern. Safety, the shrinking of the area is. You know, I don't think that's a good idea. It needs to expand versus, you know, shrinking. Thank you so much.
All right. Thanks, Val. As always, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Promoting Marek Skulimowski.
Mike, I know we're way past a break time for you. Do you want to take a break at some point?
Um, I feel like it makes sense to try to chug through.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Appreciate it.
And there we go. I see you now. I'll just swear you in, okay? Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
M A R E K S K U L I M O W S K I. I'm the president of the Kustuska Foundation. So I, I do share the same concerns with my predecessors.
Sorry, sir.
Excuse me?
We have three minutes for you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I do share the same concerns with my predecessors. So the excessive height of the benches, I think it should be an open area. With some benches around, of course. And you have to understand that this monument is getting new relevance with the Russian invasion in Ukraine. So you will have more gatherings over there. It's, it's simply Russia hasn't changed for eighty-two years since the cutting happened. And I think that would be the place to celebrate and to teach history, history of what has happened, what, what, what happened in the past and what is happening right now. So that's why if you could consider opening up this place a little bit, lowering the benches to make it place more visible. And of course, more spacious, not only limited to seventy people. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Promoting Christian Porowska.
You're doing well there, Cam.
And Christina, if you are there, you can turn your video on and unmute.
I hit unmute and it says it cannot start. A video camera. I do not know why.
All right. I, I believe you. I'm just going to swear you in. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Kristina Pjukowska, K R Y S T Y N A. Last name P S and Peter, I O R K O W S K A.
Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am. We have three minutes for you.
Aside from. Not agreeing with the fact that there were open meetings with the community and so on, which I think needs to be part of the record. And that questions were not answered. I think what is the significant importance is that Mr. Carmen has only presented his renderings. You have not seen the engineering drawings to which everyone has been referring to. And therefore you cannot understand what the references are to. The bench that is going to be located around the memorial is five and a half feet wide. High, excuse me, the back of it is five and a half feet high. There was one rendering, number five, which showed. The height of a person walking past and they were concealed by the bench. You should ask for the engineering drawings, which will then also show that there is a berm behind the bench. On which will be growing shrubs and plants for a total height of seven feet. This will totally conceal the base of the memorial. If there was to be something greenery around the memorial, which certainly would not have been opposed by Mr. Petynski, the sculptor. It should be an open access, i.e. Quarter circles on the north and on the south sides of the memorial. That would give greenery. It would allow for free passage. Both of attendees who wish to be present at observances at the memorial as well as people who are. Attending any events on the plaza. With respect to any safety issues, it would also allow for open passage of individuals who are on the plaza. Finally, any self-serving statement made by Mr. Pepe that the memorial will be undergoing conservation. That is part of the requirements and the duties of the Exchange Place CID. So I don't see why he is referring to it. However, they will be chopping away an apron, which. Until now, there has not been an art conservation specialist. Engaged by the Exchange Place Alliance, despite many requests. To analyze whether the apron at the very base is required to stabilize the memorial. You may have a situation that the memorial will collapse once that base is removed. I'm not saying it will. I'm saying it may. There should be a qualified conservator, sculptural conservator hired. Matthew Riley, who used to work for the New York City Central Park Conservancy, was a student of Mr. Petynski. I would encourage that the planning board require that he be brought in to study the situation with that apron.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. That was your three minutes.
And I finished.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Promoting Jean Daly.
All right, now I'm, can you hear me?
We can. Can you start your video again?
Yes, let me do that. Hold on, start video. Oh.
Let's let the record show that Ms. Daly has been sworn in and is still under oath tonight.
Very good.
Thank you.
Um, I really wish we had more than three minutes because I think this plan deserves more than three minute comment period. I know this is section thirty-one review, but I, I must state that. I beg to differ with Mr. Pepe. Mr. Pepper, he stated that they had five public meetings that were partially dedicated to this, this plan. As someone who's attended every single Exchange Place Alliance meeting, except for the ones where they prohibited me from attending. You were never able to, A, make a comment. Or if you're allowed a comment, you had two minutes to make a statement, which was never replied to. That's it. This was never brought to the community, which is an embarrassment, especially we're talking about the Jersey City master plan. It's about community. There has been no input whatsoever. Now, as Mr. Pepe said, they must defer to the pedestrians. Well, why do we have a corporate roadway? Going down to the fifteen Exchange Place? It's supposed to be for pedestrians? Fifteen Exchange Place has access via York Street. We need to preserve our public plaza for this, for us, for everyone in Jersey City, not for these private corporate interests. I do know the Hyatt House Hotel does have a franchise, the only franchise holder in that area. And their franchise is only half the size of the entrance that DeMarco has put together. Now, again, this was supposed to go out for public bidding. Under New Jersey local public contracts law, this had to go out to public bidding and it wasn't. It was awarded to Mr. DeMarco's friends that he hired when he was at Matt Kelly. Additionally. We also have what's called the New Jersey Public Trust Doctrine. What this means is visual perpendicular, perpendicular visual site access must be maintained and preserved. This is the Public Trust Doctrine. This means as you head down Montgomery, that open wide space that you see. With the skyline behind it, the New York City skyline and Hudson River, that must be preserved. It cannot be unreasonably obstructed. And that's exactly what this. Surround that is on, on the plan is going to do obstruct, obstruct nearly two thirds of the visual view of the Hudson. This is not what Jersey City needs. We, we need access to all our wonders, wonderful spaces. We need to have access to the views of the waterfront. We need to have our events right there with the backdrop of the waterfront, not some kind of berm slash plantings that rise seven feet high. I, I don't understand how this happened. Well, actually, I do understand how it happened. And. It, it really isn't an insult. This is not the way Jersey City needs to address. Things regarding its master plan. It needs and requires community input. None was had, and I can prove that. If Mr. Pepe wants, because I videotaped all your meetings. So as my statement, I request that this be. I know you only have the section thirty-one review and I apologize for that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Promoted TJ.
And DJ, if you're there, you can unmute, turn your video on. TJ.
Start video.
Here we go.
Okay.
I can.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you. I see something blurry, but I assume there's a person back there somewhere.
I'm back here.
All right. I just want to swear you in, okay? If you can raise your right blur.
Yes, thank you.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And could you state and spell your name for me, please?
My name is Thomas Kazalski, K A Z A L S K I. I am a member of the Polish American Heritage League. And I've take, take great interest. I've gone to many of the cotton celebrations. I think Mr. Carmen has done a great job of creating a very intimate. Setting for the statue, but that's the exact opposite with, of what people need. They need to be able to see the statue, the greenery, the trees, the chairs, they're all nice, but they're too high. They block access to the statue. I agree there are safety concerns. I, one of the previous speakers said, hey, how about something on the north and the south side with some seats, but we don't need them seven feet tall. Something that's more reasonable so you can see the statue. So people have access to the west side of the statue and the riverside of the statue, the east side. That would be a much more practical to, you know, as a member of the Polish community to us when we come to the cotton celebration several times a year. And I personally stop there probably a dozen times a year. If I happen to be on the exchange, on the one, path line for exchange place, I pay the double fare. Get off, walk up to the cotton statue and back down again after I've spent a few moments there for the twenty-two thousand who were killed. That's my statement.
Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Promoting Irina.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I can see you. I want to swear you in. If you could raise your right hand.
Okay, right hand.
Right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
It's Irina Guion, I R E N A, G U I L L O N.
Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am. We have three minutes for you.
Okay, I think that a lot of it has already been stated, but I'd like to say that the Cotten Monument is very important to. All Polish Americans as well as many Jersey City residents. It reminds us of horrible genocide committed by the Russians in World War Two. Thousands of Polish officers were brutally murdered with hands tied behind their back and a bullet placed in the back of their head. My parents and many of our relatives and friends participated in raising money in order to construct the monument. When built, the monument was placed on a plaza, which at the time was not of any significance to the local politicians and businessmen. This is not the case today. The design at the Cotten Monument shows that the intention is to obscure the monument from the public sight to the greater, to the greatest extent possible. And to my gatherings and ceremonies at the monument as difficult as possible. What you have shown, what the, I don't remember the person's name, is the renderings, it's pictures. You have not shown plans. You have not shown any. Measurements. And it's very, very deceitful, decide. Anyway, sorry, Mr. Petynski, Master Petynski, a world renowned sculptor who created the monument. Did wish for greenery around the monument. And Jersey City residents as well as the Polish Americans wholeheartedly support landscaping on the plaza. Please remember that Master Petynski created Cotten Monument also in Baltimore and Boston, for example. The residents of these cities are very proud to have Master Petynski's work there. It does not seem to be the case with the Jersey City. It does not seem to be the case with the Jersey City. The design of the Exchange Place Plaza around the cutting monument shows an over-seven-feet obstruction at the west side of the plaza, which is also the front of the monument. There's absolutely no reason to construct a bench that is over five feet tall. The bench is not, is so close to the monument that people sitting there will have a straight, will have to strain their necks upwards in order to look at the monument. People at the gatherings and festivals will lo, will no, will no longer face the water and the beautiful New York City skyline. The area around the monument is too small for gatherings and festivals that draw more than two hundred people. There's absolutely no reason to impose such draconian limitations. Dear Planning Board Commissioners, I am asking you to reject the current plan for the redesign of the plaza and to let the cotton monuments stand there in a dignified way. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you ma'am, we appreciate your time.
Promoting Christian.
Hello, Kristen, you're there?
Hi, I'm here.
Hi, I just want to swear you in, all right, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Kristen K-R-I-S-T-E-N Zadrogahart, Z-A-D-R-O-G-A-dash-H-A-R-T.
Thanks. Mr. Zadrogahart, good evening, we have three minutes for you.
Hi, thank you so much. I want to reiterate what everyone else has had, has basically stated. I think everyone who's spoken so far are among the people who fought so hard to keep the monument where it is. While I appreciate the upgrades to the pedestrian plaza, I just have a few questions as well. If it's truly a pedestrian plaza, why is there a private driveway, basically, for the hotel there? There's access on York Street to everything that needs to be accessed if those, if the walkway, or the driveway, I'm sorry, could be removed, there would be more space for festivals and people could still access from, from the York Street side vehicular. People can walk in as, as they please. The, I'd like to know it's about, I mean, I'm sure you can't go to the exact number, but how many people could attend festivals with this layout compared to how the layouts were previously? I know I attended a few of the meetings that were stated as public meetings. They were not public meetings where there was give and take. You basically could give a question or a comment and there was no, no exchange, nothing, you didn't get anything back. If they didn't like your question, it was just ignored and, and moved on. There was something stated in one of the meetings that if there was a festival, you could have set up on the, on the tables that were towards the front of the plaza, which are, if you looked at the pictures, they were basically two-seater cafe tables. I don't know what kind of festival could set up on three or four two-seater tables. And then finally, the obvious is the benches around the statue. I think everyone has complained about that, questioned it. When you come back to the start of the whole battle to keep the statue where it was, it was because the statue was called, I believe, gruesome. So this just goes back to the fact that it, it seems as if you're trying to come back and hide the statue, obscure it. And why can't those benches be lowered or just greenery, or people have suggested, no one's against having shrubs or, or a place to observe and reflect. But why do the benches have to be so high and why do they have to be placed where you can only enter from the back of the statue? I think that's kind of, not kind of, very disrespectful to Master Petinsky and what he wanted and wished for the Polish-American people as it, or just people in general in a democratic society. We should be able to enjoy the statue, reflect there, and it shouldn't be obscured. It should be part of festivals, not hidden away from them. So I, I know this is just not for you to approve or, or vote down, but I would hope that you could offer some of those suggestions that we come back and see the exact numbers because the pictures don't really show computer renderings. Don't, I didn't see any measurements tonight or anything exact, but things that we've seen in the past show that the statue will be obscured as it is. So I hope you can make those suggestions and make it so that we don't hide the statue. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Promoted Susan.
Good evening.
I'll swear you in.
Hi.
If you could raise your right hand.
Yes.
Just one moment. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And now, if you could spell Suzanne Mazurczek for me?
Suzanne, S-U-Z-A-N-N-E. Mazurczek, M as in Mary, A-Z as in zebra, U-R, C as in Charlie, Z as in zebra, Y-K.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am, we have three minutes for you.
Thank you. I just want to grab my notes real quick. I am the current treasurer for the Committee for the Conservation of the Cotton Monument and Historic Objects. Our organization helped lead the fight along with many others here to protect the statue in two thousand eighteen and have continued to engage in conversation with the town. Representatives from our organization have met with Elizabeth Kane and her assistant Martin about the process for the renovation. And we do, like others, appreciate the renovation concept to add greenery and make it a cleaner, a more accessible space for, for all of the public. However, the, we, earlier after those conversations and meeting and reviewing plans, we expected there to be more greenery and the lawn, we approved of many of those improvements. However, these latest renditions seem to show the area more closed in, as others have indicated. And for the large gatherings that we have, we understand that other groups are meeting, but I think a more expansive, less confined area would allow more flexibility. During two thousand eighteen, when we collected approximately six thousand signatures of supporters, also not from the outside of the Polish community, we met some interesting people. I met an Indian woman who actually had her wedding photographs taken at the statue. So although some may find the statue gruesome and not appealing, and I can understand people staying, concerned if the hotel has about who might be coming to stay, what they will be looking at. But I've even done Google searches and to my curiosity, found that the statue has, I believe now considered one of the top destination sites for Jersey City. So I don't think people come to Jersey City for a Walt Disney effect. I think it's a multicultural Mecca, as well respected across the nation. And I think, I see people taking photographs there all the time. And I also have, I appreciate the concerns others voiced about the stability of the statue and the apron. Should it be removed in cleaning up and renovating the area? And I also have a great concern about the return of food trucks nearby, which were not indicated on earlier plans. I know from previous visits, the fans that these trucks blow, blow the fat from greasy food that they fry, not to disparage their food, but in this location with the winds blowing, it tarnishes the grounds, any kind of the greenery would absorb it better than the cobblestones and so forth, and certainly in the granite statue just adheres to that. So a drop-off spot by the hotel would be something I'd be open to, but I, I agree with others. If they can be accommodated from the York Street side, I think visitors at the Hyatt Coming would welcome a pedestrian-friendly area that they can walk around and not be running away from the smells and sounds of trucks nearby, even if they
That's your three minutes, ma'am, I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments. And shout out the El Chalango Taco Truck, that's my buddy Mike there, he's down there all the time, great truck.
Promoting Alicia. Okay, Alicia declined to be promoted. Promoting Marius Bielski.
And Marius, there we go.
Hello.
Hello, Marius, I hear you, but I don't see you.
Uh, let me see. Okay, I got it. Okay. Thank you so much.
Marius, if you're driving, we can't be taking testimony from you.
Okay. All right, just want to say I'm, I'm agree, in agreement with most of the speakers.
Sorry, we can't take test, okay, thank you. Okay, see Alicia's hand raised again. Ken, can you give it one more shot there?
Okay, she's promoted.
Okay, thank you. And Alicia, if you want to just unmute, turn your video on.
Do you hear me?
I can hear you. I don't see you right by that button that you unmuted, there's the, the video button.
Well, it is on, but I don't know what it is.
All right. All right, uh, yeah, we don't need to push it. I just want to swear you in. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please? Thank you. Good evening, ma'am, we have three minutes for you.
Good evening. I basically agree with every statement which was brought up by commentators. I'm a mechanical engineer with, with license in New Jersey. I'm very concerned about safety, about open space, about the benches, high benches around the monument. It meant to be open, it meant to be view. Some do call it gruesome. The crime was gruesome, not the monument. Monument is just showing what happened three times. And we cannot have a dancers there. So, thank you. And also all the concerns by Ms. Daly should be really examined and we should address them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, we appreciate your time. All right, anybody else, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in and you'd like to comment, you can press star nine, please.
Promoting Edward.
Can you see me and
Okay, Ken, and I can. I just want to swear you in, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Yes, Edward Jesman, E-D-W-A-R-D, last name J-E-S-M-A-N.
Mr. Jesman, good evening, we have three minutes for you.
Okay, no, I will be short. This whole thing started with an effort to remove the monument and later progressed to an effort to relocate the monument. And right now, we have an effort to obstruct the view of it. I am an active participant in the Polish-American community. I preside over two organizations and I, I think that the community is something more than just commercial interests. It's about values and the sense of history. Please preserve this monument the way it is and please don't obstruct the view of it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir, we appreciate it. All right, anybody else, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. Once again, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Promoted Susan.
Is it the same lady, woman from before? Yeah. Let's just make sure it's not.
Yes, thank you. My mother, Victoria Alaneski, would like to speak. Here, sit right here.
Okay, I wanted to see if it was somebody else on the same computer. And, yeah. Thank you.
Yes, yeah, one second, mom. Okay, oops. Okay, there you go.
We got you.
Good evening.
All right, ma'am, I want to, I need to swear you in now, ma'am, if you could raise your right hand.
Yes, I do.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I sure do, yes.
All right, and could you state and spell your name for me, please?
Victoria is easy for anybody to spell, but A-L-E-N-I-E-W-S-K-I is the last name.
Thank you.
And I was here.
Three minutes for you.
Thank you. Thank you for taking me. I was here with the groups when we first were getting signatures from people all over Jersey City till midnight, getting them and then staying in with the town at the meetings to make sure that everything was the way it should be and the way it is today is beautiful. And as my daughter said before, someone mentioned that they had their wedding picture before that. But we had the councilman who was here, the late Mr. Hune, who said to me, he said, well, it was for what Poland fought for? And that's what we are now.
For my country.
For my country. He said, for, it's my people. And I figure if, if he liked it that way, and yeah, where should we kind of say he's wrong and put all these things in front of the building so it's an obvious effort to tie of, try to wipe it out altogether. But the Polish people are not to be wiped out, so just keep remembering that. Amen.
Like the Ukrainians.
Like the Ukrainians, yes.
They should not be wiped out.
They should not be wiped out.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for taking me.
Thank you. All right, anybody else, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. Once again, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, I see no more public, I move to close the public.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, public is closed. Before we bring Mallory up, Mr. Pepe, do you have an idea on the capacity in the current design?
I don't want to be misleading. I've heard the number two hundred plus thrown around. I mean, it's not a small area. If you've ever been to the Vietnam War Memorial in Homedale, the New Jersey Vietnam War Memorial, it's actually a larger space than that. But Tom, did we do, did we do a body count as to how many people could fit in that semicircle area?
We did not do an actual, you know, person count for the area, no.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Mr. Chair, I have one. Can I just ask a real quick question?
Sure, absolutely.
Did, I know I heard it was kind of a, a lot of people were saying that that, you know, the, the community involvement. I, I just wanted, for the record, how many times did you meet with them? You might have said this before, I'm sorry if I missed that.
So we discussed the plans for the park on no less than five of our Exchange Place meetings, which are Open Public Meeting Act meetings, that were published in the newspaper. And the plans were always provided on our site. We had one global community meeting that was published in the newspaper specifically to address the plans and notice was sent to people within two hundred feet.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
All right, thank you, counsel. All right, Mallory, do you want to wrap up for us? Unless, Mike, do you want to take a break real quick? A ten-minute break, sure. Okay, um, yeah, I know we're almost an hour late for it. It's eight twenty now, let's come back at eight thirty, please, everybody. Okay, um, yeah, I know we're almost an hour late for it. Uh, it's eight twenty now. Let's come back at eight thirty, please, everybody. All right, it's eight thirty, everybody. If we could come back to order, please. All right, so Mallory, we're up to you.
Yes, um, so I would offer, given the um public comment tonight, that the Alliance could consider just adding, uh, you know, a break in the uh planter and seat wall at the front of the statue to allow kind of more open throughway access. It's a, you know, design change I would uh offer them to consider moving forward. Um, other than that, I would say this is consistent with the goals of the master plan. Um, the open space element and the larger RJC vision. Um, you know, they're not changing the inherent use of the site from what it is today. It remains a public plaza. Uh, this is more of a just a design and aesthetic upgrade um, from the current conditions. I would say that the um traffic safety measures that they've coordinated with the Office of Engineering to improve uh pedestrian safety and are consistent with the Vision Zero goals of the city. Um, they've been in in an iterative process with the engineering office and other emergency uh response teams throughout the city to ensure that, um, you know, everything can operate safely while prioritizing the pedestrian experience in the in the plaza. Um, other than that, I think, you know, if the board has any questions for me regarding uh, you know, the master plan and and other matters, um, you know, I think I think that we've um covered most things in design. I just do want to offer, I'm sure the board is all seen. Um, the technical plans such as the en- the civil engineering set and the landscape technical drawings have been available on the data portal uh since the distribution deadline, so I'm sure you all had time to review those as well.
Yes, yes, we did. Um, I I mean, the only thing I'd like to say is I I do agree with the idea of rehabbing the pedestrian plaza. Um, I I don't know why we need to put five foot tall benches on a berm around a statue. Um, that a statue that obviously means a lot to a lot of people. Uh, it's a Jersey City landmark. It's, you know, I love that statue. Um, I respect everything it represents and I I I don't I don't see a world where I can support the the current design around that statue. Um, do I think we should have flowers planted around it? Sure. Do I think we should have benches plant or benches around it? Yes, but I I also agree with the safety concerns. Um, I don't think that's the proper design. So, you know, I would like to see some softening of the design, lower the benches, make the the statue more visible. Um, you know, one of the members from the public commented about sitting that close to the statue. How do you see that? It's it's like sitting in the front row of a movie theater. It's crazy. Um, so, yeah, I just, I can't support a design that that obstructs the view of that statue. Um, I I don't think this design adds to the beauty of the statue. I think it takes away from it if anything. But, um, you know, anybody else, if you want to comment before we make the motion?
Chair, I totally agree with you on that. Um, the statue signifies um what Jersey City is all about as well.
Agreed.
Those benches are not needed there. That that height of the bench and to be so close to that statue, I think it's such a total disrespect.
Yeah.
And I truly can't support that design myself, looking at it and analyzing it as well. I I truly can't.
Okay, um.
Yeah, I just added that that, I agree that I think the, you know, the vegetation and the, you know, plantings around there, you know, add to the environment there, but I think it should do more to accent and highlight the statue, not in any way impeded or, you know, block the view of New York, block the view of the statue or anything around that area. I think it should be, you know, open and enjoyable for everyone and be able to serve everyone for whatever, you know, reason they go down there. So, I agree.
I agree.
Sir Chair, I'll read my comments for uh for when we vote, but I think at this point, I'd like to, having heard everything, I'd like to uh make a motion to um to not accept and not recommend uh the the current presentation of the review and discussion of public plaza designed for updates to the Exchange Place Pedestrian Plaza at Hudson Street and Montgomery Street wrapping north to Christopher Columbus Drive. And perhaps uh having them, uh, you know, go back to the drawing board as as it pertains vis a vis to the to the actual statue and the surroundings and the proximity of the statue. So so my motion is to not accept and not recommend, as it is presented today, uh, the this presentation.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to not accept.
Correct. So that means uh an I vote is to not recommend the plans as provided.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yep. I know, um, what the other commissioner says, what Jim said, um, and that's to the presentation. Yeah, that part of the waterfront, it's not there for justice. As one speaker said, uh, it's not, we don't, the area is not evolved around the monument. But the monument is there. It has a significant history in Jersey City, which was what we are all about. And there's like one person brought up and that really struck me was when I come down Montgomery, when I come down that street, that view of New York, the view of the water, that's enough shock that that is unacceptable. It's not a, something else should be checked out. Um, I hope if they go back to the community that the next time we don't hear something like the community had no questions, you know, were written down. That's that's not a community meeting. That's not what this board stands for. Our community meeting is to be um an interactive basis. Ask questions, have input, feel like you have something. And with that, um, I'm gonna vote yes that we all strike this one down. For now.
Commissioner Horton?
I believe my previous comments kind of stand for themselves. And again, I just emphasize that, you know, not only to highlight the statue, but the view itself, kind of like Mr. Torres, Commissioner Torres said, is important. So I want to make sure that's opened up so everybody can enjoy it equally. So I vote I for no.
Commissioner Green?
It's a no.
It's a no, okay. So you're you're a no vote, correct?
You said I for no, correct?
I for no. So are you an I vote or are you a no vote?
Yeah, a I for no vote.
I for no. Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure I'm clear on that. Commissioner Gangadin?
Yeah, I just want to thank the community for coming out voicing their concerns. Um, uh, community input is very important, um, not just saying and and saying we we publish the meeting or we inform them about the meeting, but having the community input with a dialogue of back and forth and agreeing is is very helpful. And I'm sure this would have not been a situation here this evening if the community had some input into it as well. Um, so my vote tonight is a I.
Commissioner Allen?
I.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Yeah, I I agree with the community and then the view from that area, all New York view, Jersey City, is the part everybody enjoys and those benches, they are too big. So I vote I for no vote.
Vice Traganzals?
Uh, thanks, Mallory. I think I was supposed to go first, but it's all right. Um, I um, I have a lot to say, actually. I I uh Exchange Place is my port of entry into New York. I have an office in New York, for those of you who know or may not know. Uh, I get to see that statue uh on a, you know, probably daily basis. Um, and the first thing I want to say is I think it's beautiful and I know what it means. Uh, and I am very thankful that the public came out and talked about, you know, the how 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 important the area, the statue, and what the statue means is to them and for them. Um, I have a couple of things that I have to say. One is um, I for the public, thank you for coming out and expressing because we hear you. We definitely hear you. Uh, people don't understand that we actually take the co- the comments of the public uh very seriously. Uh, but number two is that I don't want you to completely knock off this because Uh, but number two is that I don't want you to completely knock off this because for Mr. Pepe and the application, this is, this is a step up of what it is now. One of the things that I don't like about that area is that I've always felt that it's very unsafe. Uh, cars can come in very close to the statue, drive around the statue. Um, and not only is it for the pedestrian usage, uh, a, a problem, uh, for the pedestrian uses, but also for the, for the, for the area and for the statue. Um, and so I, I do want you guys to kind of go back to the drawing board with Mr. Pepe. I understand that this is actually a really nice plan. Had it not been for those benches being so close to the statue, I think, Mr. Pepe, you can now hear that people are very against that, including the planning board. Uh, otherwise, uh, it's not a bad idea to have this because it would just draw more attention to the statue. If we do sort of close it off a little bit more than it is now, and it would become more of a focal point for the area. Um, and so I am going to vote I for no to go back to the drawing board, meet with the public, but come up with something that's not too different than what you have presented, but with a little bit more reverence to that statue is obviously, Mr. Pepe, you have seen today, people are very, very, um, uh, vocal of. So, uh, my vote is I for no.
Okay, and Chairman Langston?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll reiterate everything I said before. Um, I, I think, you know, the design as far as taking the statue situation out of it, I think it's a great design. I, I think it hits all the points of the master plan. It's, you know, it's all about pedestrian access. The waterfront walkway is maintained. Um, it, it's a, a great plan. But I think that statue needs to be celebrated. And this design does not do that. That statue needs to be celebrated. It, it should be, you know, it, it is that area. Anybody that knows, you know, you talk to somebody from out of Jersey City who, I'm in construction and, you know, I have a lot of union brothers and sisters that work in the area that don't live here. And they know that statue. So any, anything that would obstruct that statue and not celebrate that statue, I am 100% dead against it. Um, I, I'm encouraged, I encourage the applicant to, you know, plant flowers around it, but respectfully, that maintains access to it. And, um, I think that's it. So I am going to vote yes that I'm not in favor of.
Okay, so motion carries all in favor to not recommend.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the amendment, the Jersey City Land Development Ordinance, uh, Chapter 345, Section 6, Definitions to Modify Definitions for Office and Medical Office Uses. Formal action may be taken.
Okay, um, I just wanted to quickly state on the record, uh, 32 Cottage has requested to carry. They, uh, feel that there will not be enough time to be heard. So, um, for members of the public here, um, that is, um, item 20 on the agenda address, 32 to 34 Cottage.
Okay, thanks, Cam. And, um, that's, uh, case number P22 dash 003. Does it date certain, Cam, or is that just a journey?
Yes, apologies. May, May 10th, yes.
All right, if you could, uh, I don't think we put anything in the chat before. Is there a chat?
I don't see a chat, by the way.
I don't see a chat on the bottom.
There's no chat. We got rid of it.
Okay.
It was causing too many issues.
Okay, gotcha. All right, so let's, uh, let's get back to that medical office and office use definitions application.
So this will be me for this evening?
Sure.
Um, I'll share my screen, I guess, so we have something to reference. How's that?
Do you need help doing that? You know how to do that?
I figured it out. I gotta get, I'll bring my kids in, see if they can help me. All right, everybody can see it, yeah?
Well, yes.
Awesome. So, um, I did, uh, submit a staff memo, and though I understand I did submit it yesterday, um, it's a fantastic memo. I say so myself. This three pages long, so I didn't expect you to read all of it. Um, but I do want to explain at least the origin of us looking into this definition change. We've had about five, I guess, requests at this point, um, for medical office uses. In fact, um, one of them was before City Council on Monday night in the Hamilton Park redevelopment area, and so it would be before the planning board shortly. Um, we put a lot of, uh, research, uh, into this. Um, and I reached out to our, uh, cohort in New York City, New York City Planning, and I asked them how they looked at office space and how they looked at zoning for medical office. Um, and the way that they do that really is primarily through capacity issues and issues that maybe, uh, we consider negative kind of criteria or maybe detrimental impacts. I mean, a lot of the detrimental impacts that come along with medical offices, what I think the, the community or, you know, are just, uh, are thinking of normally is parking, of course, is one of them. Um, and I think signage is the other. Um, so the way that, uh, office addresses those, um, it wouldn't be that different. So if you've been in a professional office setting, um, you know that there's still frequent visits, um, that there's still a need for parking for people who are coming to and from. And the signage requirements for office would be very similar to what we would expect for medical office. Um, I actually think that maybe a medical office would want more, so this might even be bringing it back. But for the most part, in all of our zones, our medical office, uh, signage has been conforming with that. So, so like, let's say it's the NC zone. The signage for a medical office wouldn't be any different than the signage for a retail store. So it's more about conformity with, you know, the street, um, than anything else for signage. Our ordinance has always treated office and medical office separately. Um, and so with this just a definition change, um, I think maybe in the future, we really need to look into adding office use in more zones, especially in areas where we permit retail or commercial. It doesn't make any sense that we wouldn't permit office, but that effort will take a lot more than this simple effort, and this effort will have a huge impact, right? So just allowing um, office and medical office to be treated in the same way as a zoning or land use um, will open the amount of spaces for medical office is by three times. So right now, um, just changing, let me see if I can explain this a little bit clearer than that. Um, the amount of zones that medical office is permitted versus the amount of zones that office is permitted is three times the amount. Um, so this would, just along the definition change would make, um, the ability for us to have medical offices way more prevalent, way more accessible to the residents of Jersey City. What I focused on in my staff report really was about, you know, population changes in Jersey City. I think we've all um, have heard these things in the last year. You know, urban centers are definitely growing. Jersey City has grown tremendously. We're almost at 300,000 people. Um, and, you know, the health department, if you're not familiar with what the health department has done in Jersey City, um, since 2014, they really made tremendous efforts to, I think, bridge, um, inequity, uh, and equity gap in Jersey City. So folks who are, who are more vulnerable, have less access to healthcare, um, to a clinic. Um, they really gone out of their way to create programs, uh, in order to really address this. And I think planning, making this little effort, this land use effort, will open the ability just for medical offices to exist in more places, and that makes it more accessible for, you know, people who maybe don't have access to, um, maybe, uh, let me see if I can explain this better. Sorry, uh, getting a little my head of myself. I, my report was really good, so maybe I'll just refer to that a little bit. I think one of the most interesting things that I did find, and, uh, the health department actually called it out as well, was, um, the inequity, uh, of the amount of healthcare workers or the amount of space, I guess, that's dedicated to healthcare versus the amount of people. And Hudson County is one of the, has one of the lowest, um, ratios. So like, we have, I think, the ratio was 15 healthcare workers. Let me see, I'm, forgive me for running around on this. Um, now I sound like everybody else, right, who's on here? It doesn't seem prepared. Take fun of me later. Actually, I didn't think we'd get to meet tonight, so.
Isn't that first paragraph there, Tanya? 15 out of 20 and 34 of 1?
Yeah, Hudson County has 34 workers for every 24 residents, whereas Burton County has 15 for every 20. So really what that means is that folks who are relying on healthcare are either probably going outside of Jersey City for that. Um, and so, uh, some of the statistics that we highlighted in the master plan really shows, um, kind of, um, that we've, like, these inequities really exist, of course, um, more so in works where we're more economically vulnerable. Where B, where F, where the prevalence of diabetes or hypertension, um, uh, issues with just, uh, connections to being able to access a clinic easily. Um, and uninsured population. Um, and then I guess to bring it back to just, you know, the land use issues, our master plan that we just finished, um, really talked about what we call a 15-minute city, which means that within 15 minutes of where you are, you're able to get your necessities, which really kind of cuts down on, of course, your need for a car. But, um, you know, your food is going to be there. So this is more than just, um, you know, medical, but this is definitely one of them. And so I highlighted some of the goals that were established in the master plan that you just heard a couple of months ago. Um, and some of that is to prioritize reinvestment in socially vulnerable communities, increase flexibility of programmable spaces, and accommodate population growth and changing needs. Yeah, like needless to say, in the last two years, I think we've seen more of a need for medical office space than ever before. Um, with all of the spaces that have needed to open up to, um, allow for more testing, for more clinics. Um, we've had to like really learn and use what flex space is. We opening up armories and schools um, and all of that in order to really just kind of get people access to not just the, the testing, but to the vaccinations um, and things like that. So really, um, just to kind of close it up, I do, I do want to reiterate that I did speak to um, the Director of the Department of Health, Stacy Flanagan, and I also spoke to the Director of, uh, Code, the Construction Code Official, Ray Meyer. Um, and they agreed with me that within our definition, um, even if I didn't write in the definition, I will tell you that it would have been handled under the health code requirements and the building code requirement, but just for the extra layer of comfort for everybody, I reiterated it in the definition. Um, and so those things are, would be like, you know, medical waste, um, capacity issues. Um, inventing, all of that covers under building code or health code. So really what we're focusing on or what I'm trying to get us to focus on, right, are just the land use impacts. Um, and so just, I guess, again, for comfort, I've added in those extra, I've added in that extra language, um, for the code. And again, I spoke with both the directors who are comfortable with, um, the definition, comfortable with the changes. Uh, that's really all that I have. I think I went on probably a little bit longer than I needed to. Um, I'm going to stop sharing.
Tanya, that was awesome, but, uh, thank you. I, uh, oh, okay, maybe I don't have to. I thought I may have to recuse myself, but apparently not. Okay. Sorry.
So I'll stop, stop, stop sharing. Um, and I'll, I'll take, uh, any questions or any comments or any feedback, please.
Okay, thanks, Tanya. Um, I have no questions. I, I think personally it's a no-brainer. Um, but, you know, anybody else? Anything? Any questions?
Chairman, just one quick question. And I thank you, Tanya, for all the research. I found it very informative, and I think you did a great job with that. Um, this doesn't necessarily bind the two definitions together, meaning that for instance, you could have a zone where just medical offices were permitted, but not regular offices, correct? It just kind of adds where medical offices could appear. It doesn't necessarily change where offices can appear.
Correct. I mean, if, so basically it's just saying if an office is allowed, a medical office is allowed.
All right, I just want to make sure, you know, I know there's some areas where the more residential medical offices are allowed, but normal offices aren't, and I just want to make sure it's not changed that, but I appreciate it.
I, I, I will tell you, just to make you feel a little bit more at ease. Um, when I did, I had, I had to go through every single one of our zones just to verify, you know, that this would make an actual impact. Um, the medical offices that are permitted in the more residential are usually done as a home, um, occupation. Um, so more like what you see, like, more traditionally, like, um, little offices out of, like, uh, maybe ground floor homes, like, maybe what we call, like, on Benly, where it was like doctors row. Something similar to that, but definitely not like an NC. Most of this was on, um, commercial, commercial corridors or commercial areas, not within R1, for sure.
I understand. That's what I suspect. I just want to make sure it's clarified, but thank you.
Of course.
All right, thanks, Peter. Anybody else?
Sheriff, the board would indulge me for 30 seconds. I just want to tell the members of the public that are listening, this is a unbelievably important function of both this board and planning. I am sure Tanya spent way too many hours looking at this issue, which on its face seems like a 10-minute no, nothing event. But the amount of work and the actual impact that this will have, this is the stuff that nobody appreciates, that this body does, and really that planning does, to keep everything uh, moving in the direction that it should be. So, Tanya, I know that there was a lot of work that went into something that seems to be so simple, but, uh, great job, very important stuff.
Appreciate that, Council.
Yeah, yeah, agreed. Okay, anybody else? Anything? All right, thanks, Tanya. Appreciate it.
Of course.
All right, at this time, if anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this, uh, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Okay, we have one.
I see one.
Okay, promoted them. Matthew.
All right, sorry, it took so long. I just.
Are you, um, I know your council, obviously, we're familiar with you. And, uh, are you?
I just happened to see this, so I thought I'd ask a quick question.
Are you here as council or just an interested member of the public?
Just an interested member of the public.
All right, then I will swear you in. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And could you state and spell your name, please?
Matthew Ceres, C E R E S.
Thank you.
Mr. Ceres, it's my pleasure to say that you have three minutes.
I just was looking at the definition and I had a, was wondering, is the term practitioner defined? Because, uh, listen, I'm just throwing it out there. So I, I mean, you could have a holistic medicine. It could be, they could use it later. I'm just asking if you guys defined what a practitioner is.
Um, Tanya, any idea?
I'm looking, I'm looking it up right now.
Okay.
Sorry, and I do not mean to be a pain in the butt. I just saw it and thought I'd throw it out there. I might want to tighten that up, but it's completely up to you guys.
Is that your only question, sir?
That, that is.
Okay, so we, um, in the zoning code, there is not a definition for practitioner. Um,
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Ceres. We appreciate it. All right, anybody else? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. Once again, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, I see no more public. I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, so Tanya, obviously, we have your recommendation, uh, so I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve and accept the Amendment to Jersey City Land Development, uh, Ordinance, Chapter 345, Section 6, Definitions to Modify Definitions for Office Medical Office Uses, um, and forward to City Council for formal adoption.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval and adoption.
Okay, um, Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez?
I, uh, am wholeheartedly approve, and I agree with, uh, uh, with our Council, Santo. This is the stuff that, that is important with what we do. I mean, increasing medical access to a, a, uh, ever-growing, uh, population in our city. Uh, is, as a doctor, of course, I can tell you that it is the most, one of the most important things out there. So I'm very happy to vote I for this. I wish, uh, Mr. Ceres, thank you. So I'm very happy to vote I for this. I wish, Mr. Ceres, thank you for chiming in. I wish there was more of a little definition of practitioner, because I understand that that could have a big, you know, sort of broad definition spectrum. But I wholeheartedly and enthusiastically vote I. Thank you, Tanya, for all the hard work.
Commissioner Torres?
I vote I.
Okay, Commissioner Gangadin?
Tanya, thank you so much for all your hard work put into this in making Jersey City moving forward. I vote I.
Okay, Commissioner Dr. Desai?
The public in Jersey City, they need more access to healthcare, and of course, Tanya, you did good job, and I vote I.
Okay, Commissioner Horton?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Great job, Tanya. I vote I.
Okay. Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Okay, and Council President Waterman?
Aye.
Okay, and Chairman Leiston?
Yeah, Tanya, great work. Like Santos said, it seems like such a little thing, but, you know, this is gonna have a major impact, and I gladly vote I.
Okay, motion carries all in favor.
All right, thank you, everybody. Thanks, Tanya. All right, let's move on.
I have another announcement. Okay, so we received communication that Item 23, Address 119 Merritt Street, Case Number P21-053, will be carrying to May 10th.
Okay, gotcha, Cam. So that's Case P21-053, 119 Merritt Street, is carried to a base there in May 10th. Okay.
Also, Chairman, apologies. I also received correspondence that the two subsequent items after 119 Merritt, those are Items 24 and 25, Cases P21, 120, and P2119. Those addresses are 212 to 230 Cole Rav, and for Item 25, Address 70 Mallory, also requested to be carried to the May 10th Regular Meeting with Preservation of Notice.
Okay, thank you. And the case number on 70 Mallory is P21-119.
Correct.
All right, thanks, Lindsay.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Sorry, Chris, before we promote Gene O'Connell, I presume Mr. Pepe is raising his hand to perhaps carry one of his cases, so I'm just gonna promote him real quick.
Sure.
And I'll be promoting Gene O'Connell in the interim.
Yeah, while, while we're hearing from Mr. Pepe, if he could.
Thank you, Cameron, for noting that. I presume that the board is gonna follow their typical procedure and not take any cases after 10:00, correct, Chairman?
Well, no, we won't call any new cases after 10 o'clock.
So on Case 16 and 17, I'd like to carry them with Preservation of Notice.
Okay, 16, we've already carried, correct?
Yes, correct. I did that.
Okay, so we're moving to carry Case 7, Item 17, Case P22-032, for 258 to 282 16th Street, and 311 and 312 7th Street, and 305 Cole Street. All right, thank you, Council. We appreciate it.
You note for the record, though, that this is the third hearing that we've sat through, so, yeah.
Understood, understood. I, I
You guys do the best you can. It's not a criticism.
I wish we could move things along quicker for you.
I was part of the process.
If you've sat through three, think of how many I've sat through at this point.
Yes, sir. And thank you, everyone. Have a great day.
All right, thanks, Council. All right, let me get back down to the agenda here. So we are calling Item 11, is Case P19-194, is a preliminary and final major site plan with variances for 632 to 652 Grand Street. Council, we finally got you here.
Yes, good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. It's nice to be here.
All right, go ahead, Gene. Floor is yours.
So this application is for a four-story mixed-use building with forty-eight dwelling units. It has very, it only has two variances, one for maximum number of signs and minimum side yard. It's a property on the corner of Grand Street and Bishop. It was an old gas station that's gonna be reused for a mixed-use building. I have four witnesses tonight. Our engineer is Calisto Burton. I hope he's out there. Our architect, Jasvinder, our Johnny. I have Lee Klein, our traffic engineer, in case the board wants to hear traffic. And Carolyn Westell is our planner. So those are my four witnesses. And it is a notice case, so I guess we have to mark the notices, and then we're set to go.
Please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Chairman, I am to receive the affidavit of publication, proof of mailing. It's noted for purposes of the record that this matter was originally scheduled back in February and has been carried with preservation of that notice through today's meeting. So I've had the opportunity to review it. All appears to be in order. We're gonna mark those as a one for the record.
Okay. Yep. My first witness will be Calisto Burton. He's our engineer, and he'll do our, our site plan. So if he can be promoted or, and sworn in.
So swear in. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Calisto Burton, C-A-L-I-S-T-O, Burton, B-E-R-T-I-N.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Burton, is your license current in the Garden State of New Jersey tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you, Chairman. So, Calisto, if you could just share your screen and just go through the site plan for the board. Okay, we have a set of site plans that were submitted. The drawings are dated June 11th, 2021. I have before you the cover sheet. So just to get an orientation of the property. We are on Grand Street. We're four blocks east or northeast of Communipaw Avenue. You can see Communipaw Avenue. The site. I'm showing you also an aerial photograph. The site is outlined in a, in a solid line here. We have Bishop Street on the right side, Grand Street below us, and State Street on our right. Just from this photograph, you could see the, there is one house behind the site off of Bishop Street, and the rest of the site behind us is really used for parking buses and trucks and that sort of thing. Opposite this site on State Street is, well, this shows an old building, but it's under construction and being redeveloped as a mixed-use building similar to this. So the, the site is in the Morris Canal redevelopment plan area, and it's the mixed-use B-zone. Okay, I'm now showing you our, our drawing C2.1, which is the existing conditions plan. Again, you can see the site is somewhat triangular in shape. There is, it's comprised of two lots. Lot 12 is the lot on the right side. It consists of a former gas station. It has been closed, but the site is completely paved. The remnants of the tank, well, the tanks have been removed. The islands are still there. But like I said, the tanks have been removed. To the, on Lot 14, there is a three-story mixed-use building, retail on the ground floor, and apartments above that building, too, is empty. And as I mentioned, the site is about 100% paved. The total lot area is 20,598 square feet. I just should note here that Grand Street is two-way road, as is State Street, but Bishop Street is one-way heading away from Grand Street, heading up in north-easterly direction or north-westernly direction. There are, for the gas station, there are three driveways, just to point that out. Almost the entire, almost, almost its entire frontage on Grand Street is a driveway, as is the case with Bishop Street, and there's one driveway for the apartment building. I'm gonna go to the next page, is drawing C2.2, our site plan. And we're gonna show the proposed building. This is a four-story mixed-use building. There'll be three levels of residential above the ground floor, which is shown here in this, in the site plan. There'll be a total of forty-eight apartments. Twelve of them will be studios. Twenty-four will be one-bedroom. So that's 75% of the units will be one-bedroom or studios. Then there'll be nine two-bedroom units and three three-bedroom units. The ground floor, and the architect will get into this in more detail, but I just thought we orient ourselves. The ground floor does contain two retail spaces near the Bishop-Grand Street intersection. You could see there's retail A and B. They total about 2,600 square feet. The rest of the ground floor, well, well, the rest of the ground floor, we have transformer room, we have electrical room, we have meter rooms, and we also have a parking lot and a lobby and an amenity space. But just staying with the outside of the building, the, the front yard happens to be State Street. So that means the side yard is the lot, our rear yard, which is the lot line to the north, and we meet the 10-foot required setback, but our other side yard is Grand Street. And we meet the zero-foot setback for a street, but we have a variance for the side yard setback since Grand Street is a side yard. And there's no rear yard, and so we have a zero-foot setback on Bishop Street. In addition to the building, we will redo the curves and pavements on all three of our site frontages. In the front of the building, we have a courtyard with an amenity space, benches, and that sort of thing, and a paver walkway that we propose to add an amenity to the building, an exterior amenity. So I, what I like to do is, I'm just gonna jump, I have it here, is a rendering, the architect will talk about more. This is a rendering looking northerly at the site. So we see the building, it's an L-shaped building. Bishop is on the right, State is on the left, and Grand is on the bottom, and you could see the courtyard. And then, again, we are renovating or upgrading all the street frontages. I'll go back to the site. So I would like to point out here that for our, our access is off of Bishop Street. And we have a garage door towards the back of the building with 22 parking spaces in it. Going through our parking requirement, the retail requires one space per thousand square feet above 5,000, and we have less than 5,2600 square feet, so of retail, so there's no parking required for that. The studio and one-bedrooms do not require parking. So the two and three bedrooms do require parking, so there's 12 units of one-quarter space per unit, which is three. So our parking requirement is three spaces, but this parking lot has 22 parking spaces. So we've tried to provide as much parking as we can on site. Not shown here, because we produced these plans a while ago, haven't revised them, is electric vehicle parking, and we will provide four electric vehicle parking spaces on the site. Pedestrian access, we do have a, an entrance off of Bishop Street would be the main pedestrian access. There's a second pedestrian access off of that courtyard in the middle of the property, in the middle of Grand. And you'll see there's a sidewalk that goes to a doorway leading to the lobby. And then we have a third pedestrian access. This is a staircase that comes up to a landing in the parking lot. I'll explain why we have the staircase and the landing. And then the, the retail buildings have access directly off of Grand Street. And then I mentioned there's an amenity room, and that has access out to the courtyard. So we'll go to the next sheet, C2.3. And this is the grading plan, and I'll get into why we have those landings. You could see the spot elevations around the perimeter of the property. It's around nine, elevation nine, but the flood hazard elevation is 12. So what we've done is, as you come into the building, so you're driving with the car, the first area is flat, but then the parking lot slopes up to a higher elevation, which is 13, one foot above the flood hazard elevation. So that's why we have this landing off that higher area to have access at one foot above the flood elevation. So in the event that the place floods and we have to evacuate people, they can walk down this staircase and get out of the building above the flood elevation. We have proposed, and there's details for this, floodgates for all of the doors, so that we can secure the building, so it doesn't get, it won't get flooded. So this is called dry floodproof. But the stores are at elevation nine. We've elevated the electrical room, so it's at 13. And then we have a recycling room and water service room. It doesn't matter if they get, they get wet. I just mentioned one other room here is off the lobby, is a bicycle storage room, and we have room for 24 bicycles in that room. The site is, as I mentioned, 100% paved, and you could see we've got a 10-foot landscaped area behind the building, and we've got a courtyard where we've tried to have some landscaping, and any walkway would be pervious pavement. So we've actually reduced the amount of impervious coverage, but we're still going to be providing a rooftop detention under the building, to further reduce the runoff. And then our, our utilities, some will attach to go out to Grand Street, and the other utilities to go out to Bishop Street. I'm gonna go to our next sheet, which is 2.5. Well, 2.5, yeah, our landscape plan. So the area behind the building, it is on the north side of the site, we do propose to put in some trees and make the rest of the area lawn. That area is accessed by both Bishop and State Street. There's no access directly from the building, although we could make it to the utility room, but there's really no sense in doing that. So that we would have, for general purposes, it could be used as, in part, for a dog run behind the building. So the, the courtyard is landscaped. We have ground cover, we have shrubs in that area. There's a little triangle next to the amenity room, which is fully landscaped, no lawn. Right? And then we will replace this, well, we will install street trees, street trees on all three street frontages. Lastly, we'll go to the landscape plan, which is C2.6, I mean, I'm sorry, lighting plan. And we propose to have wall lights all around the building. That's this symbol B that's there. And it's a, it's a downlight proposed all around the building. So we will be lighting the sidewalk all around the building. There are three street lights in front of the site and a street light across the street, but we will provide lighting all around the building. So I've tried to make that quick. There's a quick summary of the, I'm sorry, of the site plan. There's any Pretty good, Calisto. So, Chairman, if there's any questions for Calisto Burton, you want to hold them until I put my architect on?
I have no questions. Anybody else?
No. Oh, I, I should just mention that we do have a letter from engineering, and it's a very brief letter, which I like to see, and we can comply with all of the comments that they have. They're very minor in nature.
Okay, that's great. That's great news. Okay, go ahead, Council. Let's move on.
Jasvinder, Johnny, our architect, will now share his screen, and he can be sworn in.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I just want to swear you in, all right?
Yeah.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you're about to give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Yeah, it's Jasvinder, or Johnny, J-A-S-V-I-N. Yeah, it's Jasvinder Arjani, J A S V I N D E R, last name A R J A N I.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir, is your license current in the state of New Jersey tonight?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. All right, Jasvinder, can you share your screen and just go through the architectural details of the building?
Yes. Can you see the plan on your screen?
Yes.
We can, yes.
All right, so Mr. Burton did describe the building briefly, so I will straight away go into the floor plan. What you have on the screen is C four point one, which is part of the set that was submitted with the application. And it shows the first floor. The first floor is sixteen thousand seven hundred and forty three square feet, which covers approximately eighty one percent of the site. And as Mr. Burton mentioned, twenty six hundred and four square feet is retail space facing Grand Street. At the bottom, slightly at the angle bottom is Grand Street, on the left side is Straight Street and the right side is Bishop Street. So the two spaces, retail space A and B together are two thousand six hundred and four square feet. And rest of the footprint is for the residential use. That is includes garage, amenity space, utility rooms and. Bike parking, as Mr. Burton mentioned, there are twenty four bike parking spaces. There's this amenity room for the residents with the walkout door and a courtyard. Then behind the, inside the lobby, there is a mail package room, a trash recycling that which opens to Bishop Street directly. And of course, there's a transformer room and electrical room, electrical room is raised to above the flood. Hazard elevation while the transformer is lowers and that can be. And in the upper right corner is the water room. Behind the parking spaces, there's a leftover space that we're using for utilities and storage and some maintenance areas. So going to the next sheet, which is the typical floor plan for three floors. And I want to make sure you're looking at the floor plan.
Yep, yes.
So as Mr. Burton mentioned, it's a mix of studio, one bedroom and two and three bedroom units. And each floor has sixteen units for a total of forty eight on three stories. The inside, near the core are the studio apartments on either side of the core and across the stairs. And the square footage of the studio is five hundred and eighty square feet and six hundred and eight square feet. One bedroom, the two bedroom apartments are at the top right corner is one and the bottom two apartments are two bedrooms. And they are one thousand one fifty three square feet and the larger one is one thousand three hundred and thirty seven square feet. At the top left corner is a three bedroom apartment, which has an area of one thousand six hundred and ninety two square feet. And the rest of them are one bedrooms, which is total of eight units per floor. And they range from seven hundred and nineteen square feet to seven hundred and twenty six square feet. Besides that, there are two elevators, two sets of stairs, some utility space and a trash chute. On, on a typical floor. And the, the floors above are the same as this, so total of three stories. On the roof, there are, there is some rooftop equipment. And we have just showed them, showing them as blocks when we prepare the mechanical drawings, we'll have exact locations of the equipment. But what is shown here is an area for mechanical equipment. Jen, elevator room, which is actually closer to the edge of the building, which requires a variance. Because there is a ordinance that says any bulk, bulkhead or rooftop. Structure has to be ten feet from the edge of the building while the elevator room is very close to the corner of the building. It's away from the property line, but it's within ten feet, so that would require a variance. Now the next, instead of using the elevations, I'm bill, go straight to the renderings. But before I do that, we did some submit, prepare a shadow analysis. Now, the, the building across Grand Street is a three story building. Across State Street is a five story building, as Mr. Burton was testifying to. And across Bishop Street is one story. And behind the property is, I'll straight away go to the shadow study. The, that's across Grand Street is a three story mixed use building and on across state is. A five story building that is being built and on the across Bishop is one story warehouse. Behind is a parking lot and. Uh, two residential buildings. Based on the shadow study, I guess the shadow study is required when the building is more than forty square feet. And we've done a study for a fifty three foot, sorry, forty feet high building. So our shadow analysis is based on a forty three foot high building with a three foot six inch parapet. And I'll summarize this and the worst case would be the December where the sun is the lowest. And the shadow travels from the state street side behind the parking and on the bishop side. So it'll affect the rear parking lot the most, but on the three sides, it has minimal effect and, and Grand Street as well. Going to the exterior finishes of the building, I'll use the rendering that Mr. Burton had started sharing, which is. We've tried to take the elements from the buildings adjacent to our property. The, the building across the three story building is brick construction with a. A top story, which is like a stucco type of finish. And then it has bands and I have a elevation that shows the street view that shows a comparison. So the, the building across is a red brick and we have, we are trying to mimic the brick from across Grand Street. The colors don't, the rendering and the, the picture doesn't show exactly. But our plan is to match the color, brick color of the building across. The bands, horizontal bands will match as well, their limestone color. And the windows are different, which are similar to the windows across State Street, which will be a bronze colored finish. I'll go back to the area which shows the, the, the brick, the window finestrations. The courtyard, a fence and the brick pilasters, the, the top rooftop equipment will be screened. And the two. This, this shows the two retail stores with a storefront and storefront windows. And this is a typical window with louvers below, which will be used for air conditioning units. I think that, that really is the, the finishes now in terms of. There are certain design standards in the mixed use B zone. And we've tried to meet all the requirements of the design standards. Like screening the parking, not providing a freestanding sign. Having mixed use retail on first floor, brick as predominant finish. I had providing a fifteen percent landscape in front, face a five percent facing Grand Street. Then. The curb cut is on the lowest order street, which is the Bishop Street. And the parking is enclosed. So, so we've tried to meet all the design requirements of the mixed use business and the redevelopment plan. If there are any questions, I can answer, but that summarizes the, the building that we are proposing.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, anybody, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Hey, Doctor.
How many apartments you have and how many parkings you provide?
There are forty eight units and there are twenty two parking spaces and twenty four bicycle parking spaces. Based on the zone, we, we exceed the requirement, Mr. Burton had testified to that, we have more than what we need based on the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else, any questions?
And I had one, Jasvinder, are you going to talk about the signage or do you want?
Yeah, I, I can do that. On, that was on the building elevations, let me go back to.
Yeah, I just want to.
So we are proposing on a plan show for signs. One is for the apartment, but we have counted the addresses as a sign as well. Therefore, there are four signs where three are permitted. So although we call this as a sign, this would not be a sign, it's just an address, street address number. So other than that, there are two retail signs proposed, so there are three signs. Total two for retail and one for the building on Bishop Street.
Thank you. Okay, that's my testimony from my architect. Do you want me to go on, Lee Klein wants to give a quick traffic report if. You can hear him next.
Sure.
Certainly.
Ask everybody any, any other questions, given the signage testimony? Okay, go ahead, counsel.
Thank you.
I'll swear Lee, and Lee, do you swear any testimony you give tonight, it's going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Lee, middle initial D isn't Daniel, Klein, K L E I N. My license is current and in good standing and my national certification is current and in good standing.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Klein, you're qualified.
Thank you. I just want to go briefly over the, the trip generation and the circulation and access to the site. As you heard Mr. Burton say, Bishop is one way from grand, so people entering the site will enter via Bishop Street. Making either a left turn or right turn off of Grand Street. And when they leave, they'll go down to Cornelissen and then either make a right or a left and go out to Johnston or go down to Summit Avenue. And they'll have a traffic signal at Grand Street to, to make access out. Based on forty eight units and twenty six hundred square feet of retail space during the AM peak hour, we're looking at about eighteen trips. About six in, twelve out in the morning. And about twelve trips in the year, about twenty nine trips total, about eleven, eighteen in and eleven out. And then there'll be pedestrian, bicycle and transit trips as well. As, as our architect said, we, we exceed the parking requirement, we proposing twenty two, we're only four required. And we've got the bicycle parking spaces as well to give people that option. There's mass transit along Grand Street, so people can afford themselves of mass transit to get to and from work or to and from other nodes of transportation. That's really all I have to say about the traffic and parking.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Klein, anybody, any questions for Mr. Klein? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, and my last witness is Carolyn Wurstell, our planner, and she'll give our planning testimony.
Sure.
Carolyn, I'll swear you in, if you raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight, it's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Sure, it's Carolyn Wurstell, W O R S T E L L.
Thank you.
Ms. Wurstell, your license is current in the state of New Jersey tonight?
It is.
Okay, thanks, you're qualified again.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. As mentioned, this is a project, we're in the mixed use zone B of the Morris Canal redevelopment plan. We're here seeking a couple of variances this evening for that minimum side yard setback, maximum signs. And from the Jersey City LDO for the minimum required setback for rooftop appurtenance. As discussed, this site is both a corner lot and a through lot. And based on definitions of the Jersey City LDO, Grand Street is technically a side yard. The building has been designed so that there is a zero foot front setback along Grand Street. Treating it as a front yard rather than as a side yard as, as was probably it was intended by the redevelopment plan. And so this really sort of reinforces the street scape. And in the corridor where the other buildings that are being designed across the street and on, on the corner. On the opposite corner are both have zero foot setbacks on Grand Street. So it's really sort of completing the corridor inconsistent with the character of the corridor. And with the intent of the redevelopment plan to have Grand Street, which would be your typical front, to have a zero foot setback. We have a variance for the extra sign on Bishop Street. We do have the two tenant signs for retail spaces, one per tenant. And then the one act, the, the two building signs, one for the building and then one for specifically for the numbers. So we are asking for a minor, for a variance there for that extra sign. And then finally, we're seeking a variance for the rooftop setback of the appurtenance. Specifically, there is a, a stairwell. Or no, it's an elevator, it's an elevator bulkhead that's right at the corner of the building. Per the, the LDO for every appurtenance, you're supposed to have a one foot, one inch setback from the facade of the building for every. Foot in height, we're right at the corner, we don't have any setback. But the, due to the design of the building, the. It is setback from the street frontage. In addition, because we are not providing rooftop access, this is a very short bulkhead. So it, it will only be about a foot or so visible above the parapet. So it is going to be setback from the street and it's going to be much shorter than a typical bulkhead that we would see on a rooftop. So overall, this project proposes, advances the purpose of municipal land use law. It's an appropriate use and development of the site consistent with purpose A. It's a, will provide adequate light, air and open space consistent with purpose C. By providing appropriate front and side yard setbacks. And will promote a desirable visual environment consistent with purpose I by constructing this new mixed use building on what is currently. Vacant site that was formerly a gas station. We, this will not have a detrimental impact in the public welfare. The proposed setback along Grand Street is consistent with other development on corridor. The additional numerical sign to the building will not have a negative impact in the neighborhood. In fact, it will provide additional wayfinding for people looking for the building. And the project has significant frontage along three streets. So the, the signage as with extra sign is part of the cohesive package for the whole overall building. And the deviations and variances will not result in a substantial impairment to the zoning ordinance or the zone plan. And it actually accomplishes the purposes of the mixed use zone B. To provide shopping restaurant facilities at a pedestrian scale for nearby residents. And to place these uses along Grand Street, a buffer of retail uses will be created between Grand Street and the industrial zone A. And will likely have. It will also avoid disrupting the flow of traffic by removing the curb cuts along Grand Street. And providing access to parking off the, the secondary street off of Bishop Street. However, the building is still oriented to Grand Street and the applicant. And that, that's the end of my testimony.
Thank you, and that completes our application.
Okay, thank you. Any question, questions for Ms. Wurstell? Okay, thank you very much. And counsel, you stated that was the conclusion of your testimony, so I'm, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment, please raise your hand, I see Val's hand raised already.
From all in Val.
And anybody else, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand for this application.
Hey, Val, if you would just indicate that you're still under oath.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you, good evening, again.
We have three minutes for you, please.
Of course, of course, this is actually the application I was waiting for. I have to say that I have great excitement for this proposal. There are a few comments I'd like to point out and add. First and foremost. You know, I, I would like to see a little more green roof. Since, you know, there's no. Since, you know, there's no access to the roof to add a little bit more greenery that this area desperately needs. Also, I think it'll be appropriate to add some, you know, public seating in the front courtyard. If possible, for, you know, for the members of the community such as myself. You know, I also like for more attention to be brought to the flooding that occurs in this area. It does get hit with water coming down from the hill where I live and reside. Especially along with the rainwater that's accumulated. Other than that, I think it's a perfect proposal. I think it's great. This is exactly what the area needs. You know, I, I, I thought five stories would probably be more appropriate than four since all the new development is five stories. But I guess that doesn't really matter. But other than that, I think it adds, you know, greenery when there's needed, lighting when there's needed. And of course, walkability since, you know, since those, those sidewalks are just terrible, terrible condition. But besides that, I'm really excited about this proposal. Thank you so much.
All right, thanks, Val. And yeah, I agree on those sidewalks. All right, anybody else, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody else from the public?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Matt, do you have anything you want to add?
I just wanted to, I guess, first start off with, we provided the applicant and the board with a memo dated February twenty eighth, twenty twenty two.
Yes.
Mr. Burton already testified that they're going to be meeting the Jersey City in engineering comments. We do have six recommended staff conditions from city planning. I just wanted to ask if Mr. O'Connell has reviewed that with his client and if they agree to comply with those.
We have a bad, we do agree.
All right, and I think the applicant's team did a good job of describing this application. Staff satisfied with the planning test of testimony given by Mrs. Wurstell. I just wanted to add two things. This application was submitted in twenty nineteen. In fact, this is, and it's been relatively in this configuration. Early on, I think the COVID had delayed this project from coming before the. Before a city, the planning board for some time. And there was a change in some professionals on the, on their team. This does not trigger the I Z O. Because of that fact. Beyond that, I don't know if there's any questions the board may have for me. Staff recommends approval.
All right, thanks, Matt. If nobody has any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve case P one nine dash one nine four that's presented to the board here tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Okay, motion approved with conditions, Vice Chairman Dr. Gonzalez.
I.
Commissioner Torres.
I.
Commissioner Allen.
I.
Commissioner Horton.
I.
Commissioner Green.
I.
Commissioner Doctors, Doctor Desai.
I.
Council President Waterman.
I.
Commissioner Kangdon.
I.
And Chairman Langston.
I.
Motion carries on in favor. Motion approved with conditions.
Okay, thank you. Mike, are you okay to push through?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay. All right, let's move on to item twelve, this case P two one dash one five O is a minor site plan with C variance for four thirty three Central Avenue.
Okay, Chairman and Commissioners, this again is a notice case. I have two witnesses. Bob and Cheddar, our architect, and Carolyn Wurstell, our planner.
Sure.
Thank you, counsel. I am receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing. Again, this matter was originally listed back for our March eighth meeting. It's been carried through to today's meeting with preservation of notice. I've had the opportunity to review the notice. All those appear to be in order. We can market as a one for the right.
All right, thank you, counsel.
So I see Jeff, Jeffrey hitting for Bob and Cheddar tonight?
I'm here, I'm ready to go.
Okay, great. So my first witness will be Jeffrey Lewis. He's our architect on this matter.
Hi, Jeff, I'll swear in. He's running a testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Could you state your name, please?
Jeffrey Lewis, J E F F R E Y L E W I F.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, good evening. Your license is current tonight?
It's current and good standing, yes.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Jeff, just hold off a minute. I got a little ahead of myself. Just for the board's edification, we did meet with the Central Avenue S I D. And we did make a change on the plans. We put more brick on the, on the building to satisfy their request. And we also had a Zoom meeting with the community. And out of that meeting, we increased the landscaping in our rear yard. Presently, the building has no rear yard. We're, we're doing a partial demolition and bringing the rear yard in about five feet. So I just wanted to put that on the record. And now, Jeff, you can go ahead with your plan.
Thank you, and I'll show those changes in our drawing.
Counsel, let's go ahead and market then. What's the date of this plan, Mr. Lewis?
This would be the date that was. It's one eleven twenty two.
So this is the plan that was submitted?
Yes.
That's correct, yes. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't make the changes on this drawing.
Understood.
Okay, great. Okay, so we are talking about the conversion of an existing two story commercial building into a five story mixed use building. We're proposing one commercial space on the ground floor and then six residential units above. Our commercial space is eight hundred and eighty square feet in total. The residential, we have two, three veteran units. These are one thousand seven hundred and eleven square feet each. And then we have four units that are one bedroom with an extra den, den space. And these units are eight hundred and seventy three square feet each. Right now, I'm showing the existing site plan. I just wanted to bring to note a few things. One is that the lot is a shallow lot. We're only eighty seven point eight three feet deep while we are twenty five feet wide. And I also want to note, as Gene mentioned, the existing building does cover one hundred percent of our current lot. Now, moving on to our existing site plan on the left here, I'm going to start at the front on Central Avenue. We are proposing new concrete curbs, new concrete sidewalk. There's an existing street tree in front of the building that we are keeping. However, we are providing it with a new tree pit to be in compliance with city standards. In the back of the building, we're demolishing five feet off of the back of the building. So we'll have a five foot rear yard setback. And as Gene mentioned, we are right now showing this as a patio area, but we agreed in our community meeting to cut that in half. And only provide half of that space as a patio area and the other half as a, as a lawn and landscaped area. So that will be revised in the submitted drawings. Now I'm just going to move all the way to our floor plans and walk you through them. Oops, went too far. Okay, so this is our ground floor plan. The top floor is the demo plan. We don't really need to worry about that. The ground floor is our proposed, I mean, excuse me, the bottom drawing is our proposed ground floor. We can see most of the space is the commercial space. It goes through the middle center of the building. Has its own trash room in the rear and its own bathroom. As far as the rest of the building, there's a secondary residential entrance at the bottom, which goes straight to stair number one. And then at the top of the drawing, we have our main residential entrance, which leads to this hallway that leads to our elevator lobby, stair number two. Our trash and recycling room, our bicycle storage room, which is a storage for four bicycles. And a one hundred and sixty square foot amenity space in the back of the building. And then a door out to that back patio that we discussed previously. Also on this floor, we have gas meters, electric meters and our sprinkler room, as this is a fully sprinkled building. Looking on, this is a typical plan for the second and third floor. This has, each of these floors has two one bedroom units with the extra den space. All the apartments in this building are ADA adaptable and are accessed by both stairs and the elevator. On these plans for floors two and three, we're providing heat and air conditioning with wall mounted mini foots with electric heat pumps located on the roof. And how the floor layouts work here is most of the apartment, one apartment is in the front of the building. And then this apartment would wrap around the bottom to the den space at the end here. And then the second apartment is most of the back of the building and then wraps around the top to the second den space up here. Then looking at the bottom drawing here, this is our typical fourth and fifth floor plan. These floors are one apartment per floor, so it's a very large three bedroom apartment. And this plan, we have the living, dining, kitchen area in the front, some bathroom and utility space in the middle, and then the three bedrooms towards the back of the building. And then looking up to the roof, we are providing roof decks on this plan. Both stairs and the elevator go to our roof. And we're splitting the roof deck up into two. So on the back of the building, we have a common roof deck. This is for all the building residents. And this deck is seven hundred and thirty three square feet and again accessed by the stair and the elevator. And at the front of the building, we have a private roof deck, which would be only for the top floor unit. This is a smaller roof deck. It's four hundred and sixty two square feet. And this roof deck also has a green area where we have some planting trays to provide a buffer between the. Air conditioning condensers and the roof deck itself. Now looking at the front elevations. Gene also mentioned here that we added brick to this building. Originally, we were proposing a very modern front elevation. So we modified that to add more brick. The brick is a red brown brick. All of our windows and doors on every floor are black aluminum frames. We have at the ground floor, we have a three foot deep canopy that's wrapped in black aluminum that's separating the ground floor from all the floors above. We're also using these dark gray metal panels to provide accents. We're using them both next to the windows and then in between the windows vertically. And then lastly, we have a dark gray metal wrapped cornice at the top of the building. Looking to the back, we're using a dark gray vinyl siding for our main finish. All of our windows and doors again are have black frames and the Juliet balconies are black aluminum rails and posts. And then the side elevations, we can see one thing is that we are returning the brick from the front, a couple of feet back where we can. And then the rest of the side at the ground floor would be a smooth stucco finish painted gray. And then on the second floor and above would be a dark gray vinyl siding. And again, that's the same for this, which would be the right side of the building. And that's actually my presentation of this project. Thank you guys for staying so late. If you have any questions, I am happy to answer them.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis. I have no questions. Anybody else?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, then.
Hi, counsel.
Okay, then I'll, I'll call Carolyn Wurstell, our planner, just to point out that we're, there are six residential units, but two of them are actually three bedroom units. Which I think is a real plus because there are very few of those units being developed in the city.
Agreed.
So go ahead, Carolyn.
And just for the record, Ms. Wurstell, I'm sorry, it's getting late. It's morning, qualified already tonight.
Yes.
All right.
And it's still under oath.
I, yes, agreed. So we're here this evening with this project. We have one variance. It's the C variance for the minimum rear yard setback. As was mentioned, we are proposing a five yard setback where fifteen feet is required in the NC district. This is a shallow lot. We have a lot depth of eighty eight feet. Which is a twelve foot or twelve percent deficiency compared to a typical lot depth of a hundred feet. If we had a typical lot depth with an eighteen or a fifteen foot setback, you can typically get about an eighty five foot deep building. What we're proposing here with a five foot rear yard setback will allow us to provide a building that had depth of eighty three feet. So it allows us to have a very similar building depth to, to what would be permitted, although it is slightly shallower. The proposed project is providing an improvement over the existing setback. Right now, it has a zero foot setback, and so we are providing a five foot setback. And with this five foot setback is consistent with other building setbacks along the block frontage. The proposed five year, five foot setback will not result in a substantial detriment to the light and air of the surrounding properties. We did prepare a shadow study analysis, which I believe was submitted. And I can, if I can share my screen, we can just take a quick look at that. Share. So if you can see, this is sheet one F of the shadow study, which was prepared and submitted. This compares the buildings cast by the proposed building, which is in green versus a permitted building with the fifteen foot setback. So as you can see, it is an incremental shadow addition, addition, increase in shadows. But really, the, the shadows impacts to the residential properties are really limited to in the morning hours. With shadows in the afternoon hours cast on the rooftops really of the adjacent properties, which are commercial. Overall, the benefits of this project, really outweigh the detriments. We are increasing the rear yard setback from zero to five feet. We're going to be replacing the existing curb and sidewalk with new curb and sidewalk, replacing street pits with new street, the new tree bed. Offering new commercial and residential opportunities for current and future residents of the neighborhood. It will advance, promote the various purposes of municipal land use law. Appropriate use and development consistent with purpose A with the new mixed use development. It will establish an appropriate population density consistent with purpose E through the construction of the new mixed use building with six residential units. Including two, three bedroom units and promote a desirable visual environment consistent with purpose I with the new design. Requesting, the, granting the request in variances will not result in a substantial detriment to the public good or general welfare. The project is in character in terms of use and bulk with existing uses and buildings in the surrounding area. It'll provide newly constructed and sufficiently sized units for future residents. And will likewise not result in a substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone planner zoning ordinance. It's consistent with the purpose of the NC district to recognize the existence and importance, importance of neighborhood business districts and provide ground floor commercial and mixed use buildings to promote walkability. The project does comply with all other bulk requirements, including. Zero foot front and side yard setbacks. The commercial ground floor will have compliant floor to ceiling height of twelve feet with minimum floor to ceiling heights. Where a minimum floor to ceiling height of eleven feet is required. Upper residential floors each have compliant floor to ceiling heights of nine feet. And the overall height of the building at five stories is compliant. And it will provide open space for future residents on the upper roof, including the, and a common rear yard patio and landscaped areas. As such, the, the variances have met both the positive and negative criteria. And that's it. That's testimony.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chairman, that's our application.
Okay, are there any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. So counsel, if that's your presentation, we can open it up for public comment. I see one hand raised already. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Morning, Susan.
Yes, hi, I just wanted to better understand the parking for the building. I didn't catch it during the presentation. Maybe I overlooked something.
There is none, Susan. There's no parking required.
For this. Okay, thank you for answering. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else from public, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Public is closed. Francisco. Um, Francisco.
Yeah, so, yeah, this one's mine. Um, staff is in receipt of the shadow study as well as the letter from the Central App Sid. Um, that was posted to the data portal. Uh, we sent out a staff report, I believe it was March fourth, regarding the conditions of the application. Just wanna make sure that was received.
It was, and we agree to the conditions.
Okay. Um, with that said, staff recommends approval with conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve case P two-one dash one-five-zero as presented to the board tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Uh, Francis, while I have you. Thank you, Gene.
Thank you.
How long do you think we need for Newark app? Can we get it done in fifteen minutes?
Uh, I believe so. I just don't see, let me make sure.
It's uh, we have a policy. We don't start anything new after ten. It's ten oh one.
You're breaking your own policy, Chair.
Yeah.
Believe your team. So the attorney's name is Alexandra, but I don't see. I don't see it on the attendees list, but I do see the applicant themselves.
I, I can promote the applicant, Francisco.
His name is Brian Markey.
All right, promoting them.
Okay, and Cam, uh, if we could, let's uh, start reaching out to applicants. I think this is definitely gonna be our last one if we can get this one in.
Mm-hmm.
Chairman, we do need the applicant's attorney.
We do.
Oh, see.
Well, I thought I had seen them earlier, but I'm not seeing them.
Is he there?
Mr. Markey, we got you. Uh, just a video.
Yeah, do I have video?
Uh, you should.
Um. Let me see. Um. I'm clicking on my start video.
All right, do, do we, do we have your attorney present?
Uh, she was here before.
Yeah, we're kinda at that time.
Yeah, I know. Um, let's see here.
Generally don't open anything after ten o'clock. That's why I'm.
Yeah.
A time crunch here.
I know all about it. I've been here a lot. Right. Um, yeah, she was on before. I just texted her. I don't know, maybe if she's uh, not available at the moment?
Okay, unfortunately, I think we're gonna have to move on.
Okay.
I, I.
I don't know what to, um, what, what my next step would be.
Call her in the morning and ask what happened, sir.
Yeah.
We're gonna carry it, Chairman, to the May tenth meeting.
Okay, so we're gonna call, um, get back to it on the agenda. Uh, I'm on this webpage here and it keeps moving on me. Um. Okay, so we're gonna call case P two-two dash zero-three-seven, uh, carried to a date certain May tenth right now.
Okay, Cisco, on this next one, there's.
Uh, I see the, he has his hand raised. For this one, it's Justin.
Corbalis.
Yes, Corbalis.
Yeah. I think we're gonna be moving to carry. I think that one's gonna be a little longer than fifteen minutes.
Yeah, it definitely will be.
Yeah.
Not fifteen.
Um, I, I understand, uh, the commissioner's position is that this will be carried to May tenth. Is that correct?
Yes.
And Francisco, can we just review? On the agenda, it has a variance attached to it.
So I wanted to clear that up and, uh, for the record, so this is a conditional use application only. Um, it was a mistake to add the variance as well as the minor site plan.
So it is fully conforming?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Francisco, do you need a formal request for me to continue our notice and application?
Uh, we can carry that notice.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna call uh, case P two-two dash zero-seven-three is a minor site plan and conditional use with C variances, C variance for one fifty Bay Street. That will be carried to May tenth with preservation of notice.
And Chairman, that should just be a conditional use application. There should be no minor site plan. There should be no variance or deviation.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Um. All right, do we wanna bring uh, Cameron up and just start going down the list? I see we have Mr. McCann up on the screen already.
Okay, um, I was gonna let James speak, but um, I've, I've contacted attorneys and I'm waiting on answers.
Okay, let's uh, let's get Mr. McCann in. You're muted right now, counsel. You're muted.
Try this again. Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening, counsel. I, I apologize. I saw tonight going a way different way.
Um, understand, it's, it's definitely beyond uh, the board's control. I, I understand that. It is, it is a little tough. This is the third time in a row, but we, we, I appreciate the fact that you guys get on every, every two weeks and do this for five hours, so no complaints from me. Cameron did just email me and asked me for my consent to carry to May tenth uh, with preservation of notice, which consent I hereby give the board.
Okay, thank you, counsel. So we're gonna uh, we just call the number, uh, case P two-one dash one-two-five, P two-one dash one-two-six, and P two-one dash one-two-seven for one constellation place. Uh, we're carrying with preservation of notice to a date certain May tenth. Thank you, counsel. We appreciate you.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.
Uh, okay, so going down the list here, we had already carried item fifteen, item sixteen, item seventeen. We've now carried eighteen.
Yeah, all we have left is Thomas Lean, who I've emailed, and I don't see here attending uh, um, our attendee list, and uh, a Mr. Zimmerman, who I don't have a contact for. Um, so.
Um, I think Tom leans for what, one nineteen merit? No, one fifteen.
One fifty-nine Morgan. Which is the very last.
Gotcha. Okay, yeah, we heard about merit. Um, okay, James is raising his hand. Perhaps he's going to speak on behalf of Tom. Big responsibility.
Hi, good evening again, commissioners. Um, Jim McCann, I don't really know anything about Tom's case, but I don't want it to get. Um, I mean, if it has to be carried, I'd rather have it be carried uh, with preservation of notice, so I'll give consent on behalf of Connell Foley. I, I work with Tom. He's my colleague.
You got it. Yeah, we could do that. Uh, so we'll call case P two-one dash one-zero-nine for one fifty-nine Morgan Street. Uh, carried with preservation of notice. We're gonna say May tenth right now. Thank you, counsel.
All right, thank you. Good night.
Have a good night. Um. Cam, did we miss anything?
Yeah, there's just that one. Um, it's uh.
I have an email address for him if you need it.
All right, well, I'll email him, and while we're doing the uh, memorialization of resos, hopefully we get some word. Um.
Chairman, I would suggest that we carry it with preservation of notice as opposed to administratively dismissing it given the late hour.
Of course.
Uh, I think that that's the responsible thing to do as a board and as a courtesy to the applicant. Naturally, we have the ability to dismiss it, but that just seems fundamentally unfair in the event counsel does not consent, uh, you know, we'll deal with that in due time, but.
Sure.
It just doesn't seem right.
So that's item twenty-one, case P twenty-two dash zero zero.
I'm trying to go through my list. Okay, so P twenty-two dash zero zero six for six eleven Tunnelway Avenue. We're carrying to a date certain May tenth with preservation of notice.
Chairman, just for, for purposes of the record, I'll state that that's being carried. Counsel is not here. We've called out the counsel. Uh, counsel is not here. That is case P twenty-two dash zero six. The board, in lieu of dismissing it administratively, since we don't have the ability to have counsel consent to the matter being carried, uh, we will carry it under the assumption that counsel would have consented to the matter being carried with the preservation of notice and the time for the board to act. In the event that counsel did not so consent, then the matter would have been administratively dismissed uh, for lack of prosecution, again, all for purposes of the record.
Okay, thanks. All right, let's move on to memorialization of resolutions, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to uh, make a motion to memorialize the following resolutions. I have six. First one is resolution of the planning board of the City of Jersey City approving minor subdivision and preliminary major site plan. Case number P two-zero-die-zero-five-eight submitted by Newport Associates Development Company two-sixth Street and Hudson's uh, River Water Lot Block seven-three-zero-two, lots forty-three and fifty-five. Next resolution is a resolution of the planning board of the City of Jersey City. Applicant is Golden Door Dispensary LLC for conditional use approval at six thirty-eight Newark uh, Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey Block eight-one-zero-one, lot thirty-two, case number P two-two dash zero-three-eight. Next resolution is applicant Jersey City Medical Center for Minor Site Plan at three fifty-five Grand Street, Jersey City, New Jersey Block one-four-zero-zero-one, lots one and two. Case of repeat two-one dash one-three-one. Res, the fourth resolution is resolution uh, approving preliminary and final major site plan. Applicant twenty-five Clinton Realty LLC for preliminary and final major site plan approval. Property address is twenty-five Clinton Avenue Block one-eight-eight-zero-one, lot five, case number P two-one dash zero-zero-two. Fifth resolution is approving conditional use for class five cannabis retail dispensary with conditions applicant is perennial group corporation for conditional use approval for a class five cannabis retail dispensary property. Uh, address is two eighty-four First Street, block one-one-one-one-three, lot twenty-seven, case number P twenty-two dash zero-three-six. And the final resolution I have is uh, approving conditional use for class five cannabis retail dispensary with conditions. The applicant is the Leaf Joint LLC for conditional use approval for class five cannabis retail dispensary property at address three ninety-one Central Avenue Block two-eight-zero-four, lot thirty, case number P two-two dash zero-four-two.
All right, do I have a second, please?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cam, do we get a roll call from um, memorialization, please?
Yes, so Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Commissioner Green. Commissioner Green. You're.
Aye.
Doctor Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor to memorialize, memorialize resolutions.
Thanks, everybody. Um, could I have a three-minute executive session? Literally, three minutes? I'm sorry, guys.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, we do need to clear out the attendees. This is a uh, private discussion on board business. Uh, so, Cam, if we could start.
Working on it.
All right, thanks, buddy.
It takes a minute. I.
Yeah, I know.
Four left. Okay.
All right, thanks, Cam. Can we stop the recording, please?
Yes.